...thirteen city council meeting to order. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here. So just to explain how this proceeding is going to work, we have some ceremonial items that we will do first, including recognizing outgoing council member, he's outgoing, and he's outgoing, Grant House, and then the affirmation of allegiance for myself and the three council members who will be sworn in, and then seating the new installed council members. There'll be comments available to the public about those items, and then other comments related to items, regular general public comment will happen after the recess. So if you could appreciate your patience for that, but we want to get the ceremonial items completed first. So with that, we'd like to just start and acknowledge councilmember House, and thank you for your eight years of service to the city council and your many, many years of leadership to the city of Santa Barbara. So thank you very much, and start with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Would you like to say anything as parting words, Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as you can see by the attendance today, and I'm not sure it's got to do all with the ceremonial parts of what we're doing today, we are a community that participates, that really does step up when there's an issue at hand, and we come to our city council and we speak to a body that listens, that's interested in what you have to say. And I think that that's one thing I want to commend my colleagues and really honor for the time I've spent on the city council and before that on the planning commission. And that is that I really believe that we should all be grateful that we have a responsive city council, responsive to hear your points of view, and that we all, whether we agree or not, at the end of the day, we respect one another. So for me, that's something that's really been central, thematic for me in the time that I've spent here. Madam Mayor, I think you do a really remarkable job with the diversity of points of view that are represented on the council, having us have a collegial and respectful relationship with one another, and that the community can see how we make our decisions. And I just want to say that you've heard me, I think Nick Welsh calls me the appreciator in chief, and I want to appreciate Nick Welsh for his noticing that. But I also want to say that the appreciation is heartfelt. Mr. Armstrong, the staff that you oversee and that you work with, we are a family. We are a community here within the city government, and you conduct your relationship and our relationship among the staff that way. And I'm so truly grateful for the quality of leadership that is inside of our staff at every level, all the way from the most recent person, the parking lot attendants, you know, really, all the way up to your senior staff members. And the same thing is true, Ms. Connect, you are now representing the city attorney's office. Thank you so much for the quality of the work that you represent. I'm wishing you well and being able to keep your eyes open during these amazing events that you're... But really, our relationship with your office has just been great, and thank you for the great advice that you've offered us. And then lastly, really, to the community at large, I am deeply appreciative for the participation, for the engagement, and for the opportunity to have represented you for these last two terms. Thank you very, very much. I do want to say there's one person who's going to come and take my office, I understand, and we'll have a chance to see him in just a moment. But my well wishes to Greg Hart, to his family, and certainly to all of you. Thank you so much for giving us a quality person in his persona to really come here and represent the community. I admire him greatly, and I'm very glad that he's going to be taking my seat. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, we're exchanging a heart for a house, or a house for a heart. And I would like to acknowledge, although not always, but often, we're on different sides of an issue, that I appreciate your, not always succinct, but usually pretty detailed explanation of what you think. And I think people out there have benefited very much from it, too. And I know I have and have tried to learn from it. And as I told you before, I am also grateful and thankful for your cordiality that has been universal and, I think, pervaded and set a tone for this council very successfully. It's been great working with you. Thank you very much.
Likewise. Thank you very much.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. House for 16 years, and actually, he corrected that, 17. And we spent eight years on the planning commission together, and I preceded him by a couple of years on the planning commission. And I thought I would be perhaps teaching Mr. House something about the planning commission when he came on board. And he came on board with a smile and with an open heart, so to speak. And I learned right away that I was going to be learning a whole lot from Mr. House. This man took on some big projects in his day, starting, I remember, the Milpus, when you look at Milpus Street now, all the utility wires are underground. And he pulled that off, I would say, 20 to 18 years ago. He started something which today would be impossible. And thank you for that. That's one of your bigger accomplishments, and yet it's one of the earliest ones. But all these years, as you say, the appreciator in chief and also the motion maker in chief, I can't tell you, this guy is fast on the draw when it comes to making a motion, and we're all going to have to be picking up some slack there. And if you see his notes, he's got them, all the little details down there about everybody's said and what's going to go into the motion. We're going to have to pick that slack up. And of course, it's your big spirit that's going to shine on in other venues, but I feel lucky to have spent these years with you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. White.
Well, on behalf of the city of Santa Barbara, we do have a proclamation of commendation to you, and we're trying to put some highlights, there are many, many more here than of your background and your leadership, but we only have a certain amount of space on the page. But I thought these in particular during your tenure on the council were particularly important. You were elected to the Santa Barbara City Council in 2005 and reelected in 2009, and during your tenure at the city, you served as mayor pro tempore in 2012 and as ordinance committee chair in 2011 to 2013, and as the city council liaison to the airport commission task force during the airport expansion. Grant served on many multi-jurisdictional committees, including Beacon, which is the beach erosion authority for clean oceans and nourishment. We get to thank them for the plastic bag ordinance that's been going through the region right now, commuter rail exploration, and as an alternate to the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments and the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District. Grant served as city council liaison to the downtown organization, Coast Village Merchants Association, and the Old Town Bar and Restaurant Committee, and was a member of several committees related to social services, including being on the board of the Community Action Commission and as co-chair of the South Coast Homeless Advisory Committee of Santa Barbara County. And during Grant's tenure on city council, the city updated the general plan, constructed the John T. Ricard Airport Terminal, adopted the single-use bag ordinance, improved traffic safety in the East Side neighborhood, and stabilized funding for the rental housing mediation task force. So it's this unanimous resolution, the 7th of January 2014, we, the city council of Santa Barbara, do hereby present to Grant House this proclamation of commendation and appreciation and recognition of your many years of dedicated service to the citizens of Santa Barbara in acknowledgement of your outstanding contributions to the community and with our best wishes for success and happiness in the future. And thank you very much. We do have two public speakers who'd like to speak on this item, Hillary Blackerby and Lee Muldiver. And perhaps, and then also Raquel Vela Mendoza.
Hi there, Mayor and city council, and councilmember House. I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Das Williams, who has to be in Sacramento today, but wanted me to come and express his appreciation, and I'll tack on my appreciation, too, for your service. He loved serving with you on the city council and then working with you as the assembly member, and for everything that the mayor just said and everything that has been said in the surrounding days, just your demeanor and your tenacity for your passion for public policy and really listening to the people that you represent. So on behalf of the state assembly, we want to present you with a certificate of recognition for your years of service and for what you'll continue to do in the future. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Lee Muldiver, a local resident. I think we're very fortunate that we have, in the front rows here, students from the Anacapa School who get to see democracy in action at its very best, as well as visitors in the back who are here to petition the council for other reasons. And for you at the Anacapa School, I'm sure you've learned in class that many cities in California, many cities in the United States are not as open and welcoming either to guests or to public comment or to differences of opinion. And one of the things I really appreciate about Grant, and he reflects the entire council on this, is that his door is always open, whether you're a major donor or whether you are the newest renter, student, resident of the community. If you wanted to make some time with a member of council and you wanted to talk, Grant would be the person. Aside from the things that happened on the East Side during Grant's time on council, I'd also like to remind the council that Grant was an advocate for the Milpus Roundabout when that was chaos there for two generations, and he stuck with it and made that happen. And for the Casique Street undercrossing to give people on the Far East Side access to the beach and to other areas. And for you students, Grant made it a specialty for people who had concerns with public services, who did not have gray hair, who were not homeowners, who were not rich, they were renters, they were working people, they were poor people, they were people new to town, people passing through town. He decided for eight years, before Kathy got here, that he was going to be the voice of those communities on this council. And he's done that so well, along with everything else. I want to thank you for eight years of honest distinguished service.
Thank you, Lee.
And Ms. Mendoza, with guest.
Hello, everybody. I'm bringing my dog because I hope so nobody forgets my dog, because all the time say, "Raquel, where is your dog?" Don't say me how are you. Grant, I'm very appreciative of all the years I've worked with you. I hope so still working with you, and good luck for everything. I don't want to take more time because so many the injunctions I support don't pass the injunction. They need money for the students, need money for the young people. The young people don't have nothing to do in Santa Barbara. It's very sad. I come back for Long Beach, and I'm very impressed how many organizations start in the preschool. And for me, it's embarrassing, living in Santa Barbara. I come in in '65, and I don't see nothing change. Please, help the young people. Thank you. Good luck.
If you could read item number four. Items number four and five. Item number four, affirmation of allegiance by Mayor Helene Schneider, councilmembers Frank Hotchkiss and Bendy White, and councilmember-elect Greg Hart. And item number five, presentation of certificates of election. Go ahead and stand right over here. Yeah, we're just going to kind of do diagonally. As the city clerk services manager, it's my distinct honor and privilege to administer the oath of affirmation to each of you today. Mayor Schneider, would you please step forward and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter as mayor?
I do.
Wonderful. There's your certificate. Congratulations. Councilmember Greg Hart and Bendy White and Frank Hotchkiss, please step forward. Gentlemen, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter as councilmember?
I do.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Councilmember White, congratulations.
It feels really good.
All right. Well, welcome. I know we have our newly elected councilmembers, and myself would like to say a few words. Why don't we start with Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'm grateful to the citizens of Santa Barbara for giving me this opportunity to serve a second term. It's been a great education and a wonderful experience to participate in, as you've heard already with the discussion about Grant, the open and full, rich discussions that we've had about tough issues these last four years. I'm also, first of all, even primarily, I'm grateful to my wife Kathy for putting up with the election process. I can tell you that it's tough on a candidate, and it's also very tough on a candidate's best friend. So thank you, Kathy, for supporting me and helping me during this. And I do want to welcome Greg, I'll call you Greg for once here, an old friend and a veteran of Santa Barbara regional politics, and you're welcome back. So I'd like to at least touch on a few policy issues that I hope that we can work on these next four years, and I hope we can make some real progress. First of all, I want to say that the restorative policing program, which really got started during these last four years to help address our issues with homelessness, has been a success, and I think it's an area where we can increase our investment and we can continue to make some good progress there. So this is an area where I will be continuing to advocate for, for more efforts. And what particularly those are, that's going to be part of the discussion, whether it's officers, yellow shirts, blue shirts, or infrastructure behind that. That's an area where I think we can do even better. We started really well. Second, a nice specific project, the children's library project. Let's see if we can get that project done within the next four years. We want to continue, of course, to be doing our green projects, our energy projects, which I appreciate, even in these tough times, we've invested in. Our famous hydroelectric plant, now all we need is a little rain in order to make it go when it gets fired up. But in any case, I appreciate that our staff has been supportive or found ways to make them happen, and I want to continue to make Santa Barbara, keep Santa Barbara on the map as aggressive in this area. And finally, and really, this is a big item for us as a council, is redoubling our efforts to take proper care of our streets, buildings, and parks, our infrastructure. And I believe that this is going to take some increased funding. And I reach out to all of my council colleagues to say, it's not going to happen unless we have a very strong sense of support there. It's not going to be a close vote, it's not going to be a close thing. It needs to be something where we as a council and we as a community, the business community and citizens, frame the issue and then come up with a strategy that somehow we can tolerate, very focused, and both in terms of what projects we're working on and what the funding is and for how long, a very focused project. This is something which I think we can do, and I hope that we can have that conversation. I see it as needing, first of all, an inventory of the problem. And this is something which I ask that staff come back to us and that my colleagues will support, framing the whole problem of our infrastructure, which is not getting the investment that it needs. Secondly, a discussion of it, of course, among us. What of it is high priority? What's the highest priority? And establish a list of priorities. I'd like to see a TV, like city TV piece made on this that would communicate with the citizens, the needs, the situation as it stands in the city of Santa Barbara. We've inherited this wonderful place, and I hope that we can pass it along in at least as good a shape as what we founded in and that we've enjoyed. And then mobilizing stakeholders, a roundtable with our business community and with the key, the players, the people in Santa Barbara who have the stakes in this issue. Bring us together, see what we can hash out in the way of a strategy. And as I say, come up with a plan and a project for making a focused investment going forward. I think we can do it, I hope we can do it, and I'll be looking forward to this when we talk about it in meetings to come. And with that, again, I want to thank the citizens for giving me this opportunity. I will give it my best shot these next four years.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first and foremost, I don't want to commit the error that I did a few times during the campaign, which was not to immediately recognize and thank my wife for all that she did. As you may remember, I was somewhat incapacitated insofar as walking precincts, and she took over for me. It was a great help. But I'm back in the saddle, as we say now, and I don't want to make broad policy discussions, but I would like to say that I am appreciative of the honor to be sitting here, that is thanks to many of you, and also quite aware of the really grave responsibility that goes with that. And finally, I would like to recognize, and I think we should all appreciate, the fact that among many countries where it's not possible, we peacefully pass power from one city council to the next with cordiality and best wishes. And that's one of the reasons, and maybe the preeminent reason, why America stands as the country it does to the world today. I think it's good to remember how fortunate we are that we do that. Thank you.
Well, this is really an honor to have the opportunity to serve the citizens of the city that I grew up in, went to local schools here. Many of you know I served in the council previously, so it's particularly heartfelt that I say thank you again for the second opportunity to serve you as a member of the city council. It's really the highlight of my life, and I'm very, very honored to have this opportunity. I want to say thank you to my mother, who's here, Janet Hart, and my son, who's, I think he didn't even make it into the room, I think he's back in room 15. When I was last sitting on this dais, my son sat on my lap because he was eight years old. And it's been a while, he's 18 now. And I was thinking about, when Bendy was talking about the children's museum, unfortunately, that was something that I was working on when Justin was an infant, too. So let's make sure that that happens this year. I also want to recognize my good friend Lynn Redman, who's here today as well. And really, there are so many people in this room who helped me get elected. I couldn't begin to say thank you enough to all of you. You know who you are. I mean, I'm sure it's three-quarters of this room knocked on doors or made phone calls for me and really worked hard to make it possible for me to have this opportunity to serve. I really, really appreciate the work that you did for me. I will do my best to deserve that honor and support. I want to acknowledge and appreciate my good friend Grant House, whose big shoes I'm going to try and fill. It's kind of funny that eight years ago, Grant took my place, and now I'm doing the same thing. There's been a lot of things written in the paper about, you know, the continuity of the GHs. And Grant and I had coffee about a week ago or so ago and talked about the things that he would hope to bring forward, that I could help to bring to fruition. And we went through the list, and it was just check all these things off the box. We really do think alike a lot on them, so many critical issues. And finally, I think Bendy did a great job of describing some of the really important issues facing the city going forward. You know, I have some experience, I think I'll be able to hit the ground running. And when I first ran, I made three simple promises, I think they're appropriate even today still. I promised that I will work really, really hard, and I think, as you know from the campaign, that I know how to do that. And I will always be prepared, and I will do my very best every time I'm sitting here at this dais and every time I'm working for the community. So thank you again for this opportunity. It really is a tremendous honor, and I look forward to serving you again for another four years.
I'd like to thank everyone here. It's a great snapshot of the Santa Barbara community in this room, and I think it's a testament to the civic engagement that we enjoy here in Santa Barbara. It makes us work hard, you keep us accountable on many issues, and the dialogue is very important. And so I know that we're starting off here right away with that kind of back and forth and information and respect for the office. I want to again welcome councilmember Hart to the dais. And I remember sitting in the audience when you were up here, saying, "One day I wish to be up there," and when you were up here, and now we're both here together. So that's really exciting. Really want to thank the voters for their trust in hiring me, rehiring me, I guess, and reelecting me to a second term as your mayor. It's truly an honor to be in this position. I know, I see another mayor in the room, Galea Mayor Roger Sevis is here, and I do appreciate the regional collegiality that we have in our Santa Barbara County. I also see former mayor Hal Conklin in the back of the room. I think, I don't see any other electeds here. I know the representatives from many different organizations and in people. Also want to thank my family and friends. My mom's right up there in the camera, watching from Long Island, New York, in 10-degree weather. So hi. And really appreciate, again, as Mr. White says and Mr. Hotchkiss and everyone has said, your family and friends that are with you as part of the process of a campaign, you need that support. And so many of you have assisted me in so many different ways, and I just want to thank you for that and everything that you've done in a very selfless way. Just moving forward... Just moving forward, I really do have a sense of renewed optimism in the city of Santa Barbara. Four years ago, it was very exciting to become mayor of the city, but the tenor and the scope of the work was very different. The deficit issues, the issues related to the economy, how they're relating not only to municipal government, but to the state and the nation and everyone's day-to-day lives was challenging to say the least. I think in the last four years, we've persevered and we work together up here on the dais as a team to try to figure out those complex issues. And I really also want to commend and thank all the employees in the city of Santa Barbara for pulling together when we needed you most, at a time when we really needed your, your sacrifice, which you did quite a bit and continue to do. So thank you to our employees for not only making sure that we work together without sending people to the unemployment line, but was still was able to get the core work of the city accomplished and still keep Santa Barbara what makes us so special. We're not just any city USA, we are Santa Barbara, California. And I can tell you, when I meet other mayors and council members through different meetings throughout the country, they see the name tag that says Santa Barbara and they're, everyone knows how amazing this city is and they acknowledge how lucky I am to have the job that I do. And I say, yes, you're correct. They think we're a lot larger than we are. And I think that's also a testament to what the city is and what we, how we portray ourselves to the world. We are a small city, but we have grand ideas and big, bold ideas. And I think that comes across in many ways, whether it's about the cultural economy or the environmental movement, or sustainability issues, or dealing with social service agencies and, and dealing with complex social issues, regional issues. We come to the forefront and so proud of the many partners that we work with together. So moving forward, I, like I said, I have a sense of renewed optimism. There's a lot of challenges ahead of us, for sure. We are, certainly have our issues, we certainly have our debates, but yet I think, as I started off with, the level of civic engagement here in the city is unparalleled. And it, I think, makes us stronger and it makes us better. And it's just, again, an honor to serve in this role with you. And so thank you very much for being here today and I appreciate your time. So thank you. And I believe we have a presentation from our poet laureate via AV equipment or something like that.
I'm Chris Yost, Santa Barbara poet laureate, here to welcome the new council with a poem called "From Those You Represent." "To lead us well, you might listen to the loud, insistent living less. Let history whisper its voice of dust and grit in choices long since made. Listen. Find wisdom in the longer view, beyond the banners waved by here and now. Each journey starts from where we've been. See how the early wheel, way back when, left a furrow and those that followed made a path that became the road we paved. Pass through crossroads on the way, accelerate or brake or turn. So constituents still years from born and future council members say that visionaries paved the way."
Thank you, Chris Yost, our poet laureate. I think for now, we're going to move into recess and we will start then the new session with the new roll call and then have a public comment at that point. So we will recess until...
Do you want us to have a public comment?
We're going to have general public comment after the recess.
General issue, would you like to congratulate the city council and speak specifically on the agenda item of this president? I believe that there is the option for, the opportunity for public comment.
Mr. Morse, we're going to go to recess now and then we're going to reassess, we're going to start again at 3 o'clock. So thank you very much. So we're at recess. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. If we could have a roll call again, please.
Councilmember Francisco?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Hotchkiss?
Here.
Mario?
Here.
Rouse?
Here.
White?
Here.
We have one, item number 10, if you could read that.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, every month we recognize employees who are celebrating important anniversaries with the city and we're recognizing several this month. And I'd like to read their names into the record and we do have one employee, Rebecca Bjork, who's here to receive her pin from the mayor. So first with five years, Lindsay McDonald, Legal Secretary Two in the City Attorney's Office. Brian Kerr, who's a police officer. And Caesar Barrios, who's a waterfront parking supervisor. With 10 years, Madam Mayor, Helene Schneider, 10 years. And Luis Alvaro, who's a senior streets maintenance worker in Public Works. With 15 years, Lucia Corral, who's an accounting assistant in finance. Irma Unsweta, who's a project planner in community development. Brenda Messer, who's a building inspector-in-law in community development. Keith Bazell, Senior Engineering Tech in Public Works. Chris Moore, meter reader, water distribution operator in Public Works. And Gustavo Jimenez, who's a grounds maintenance worker two in Parks and Rec. With 20 years, Victor Garza, who's the parking and transportation management, I think, plan superintendent in Public Works. 25 years, Margaret Smith, Public Safety Dispatcher in the Police Department. Susan Trimble, also a Public Safety Dispatcher in the Police Department. Rebecca Bjork, the Acting Public Works Director in Public Works. And 30 years, Brett Weiser, who's a Water Treatment Supervisor in Public Works.
Rebecca, come on up. There's your pin.
Thank you. Rebecca Bjork joined the City of Santa Barbara Public Works Department as a pre-treatment program coordinator for the Water Resources Division in January 1989. In July of 1997, she was promoted to Environmental Control Supervisor. Rebecca was appointed as the Water Resources Supervisor in July 2002 and a year and a half later, she was selected as the Wastewater Systems Manager. In July 2008, she was promoted to the Water Resources Manager and in November 2013, she was appointed as the Acting Public Works Director overseeing the largest department for the city of Santa Barbara. Rebecca graduated from Leadership Santa Barbara County in 2003 and was a graduate of Leadership Santa Barbara in 2007. In 1995, she was selected as Industrial and Hazardous Waste Person of the Year for the State of California. Rebecca's received numerous commendations and was Employee of the Month for December 1989, which was only six months after she started with the city, and again in May 1996. She's received numerous SWIFT awards for her many accomplishments in the Public Works Department. Her 25 years with the city has demonstrated her unparalleled dedication, skill, knowledge, and hard work servicing the water and wastewater customers in the city of Santa Barbara. Rebecca developed and implemented the city's first comprehensive wastewater pre-treatment program, which facilitates the reliable operation of the city's wastewater system and protects the city's creeks and ocean from contamination. Rebecca grew up in Claremont, California and attended Grinnell College. She received her Master's in Public Administration from Cal State Northridge. She's married with two children, Claire and Ivar, and they're actively involved in many sports and enjoy the outdoors. So Rebecca Bjork, it is my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the city council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement. Thank you very much.
I'll say it's gone very quickly. One of the things that's changed since I started is, my notes are in 20-point font so I don't have to wear my glasses. Interestingly, I speak to you quite frequently and this is one of the few times I've had to prepare notes. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say that I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today because it represents 25 years of working for this great city. Working with a succession of leadership-oriented councils, administrations, and of course, our excellent staff. Thank you for the past 25 years of experiences and opportunities. Thank you for all who have mentored me and guided me and thank you to the many Public Works staff and all the staff of the other departments who work collaboratively to make the city a great place to live and work. I'm proud of the work that we have accomplished together in the past 25 years and I really look forward to what is to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So for public comment, we have a large number here. Generally, our policies call for 15 minutes and obviously that's not going to be the case. What I do ask is, we do want to hear what everyone has to say. If you could be succinct, that would be helpful. And there are a number of people who have waived their time to somebody else, so when that person's name comes up, I will check to see if those other people are in the room. And so I'll call your name if you could raise your hand and that way we'll know how much time that person has. And obviously you can, don't have to use all that time if you've said everything you needed to say. And like I said, we do want to acknowledge what you had, what you have to say. Also, just finally, I know we had a bunch of ceremonial items, a lot of clapping and so forth. We, we know that some of the issues that are going to come up during public comment are people are very passionate about. I would ask that we can refrain from any kind of clapping or booing or hissing or anything like that so that we can concentrate on the message involved. So with that, I appreciate that. We're going to start with, I have two minutes here at the podium, and we're going to start with Scott Wentz, to be followed by David Daniel Diaz. Is Mr. Wentz here? Yep.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Scott Wentz, representing Cars Are Basic. First item I have is a request for accident data on the intersection of Sola and Olive for one decade. The other thing is, the last time I came before you were talking about the Arlington Project. I told you that it was going to be a disaster coming along the lines of transportation. December 12th, at 6:30 in the evening, the city of Santa Barbara decided to completely blow up all the projections of the staff. How did that happen? There was two events at the Arlington Theater and one at the Granada Theater. This is without anything going on at the new Vic. Everything was parked from Mitchell Trainor all the way down to Victoria Street and from Delevina Street all the way over to Santa Barbara Street. I went and looked at every lot that was there. The Arlington lot was closed off at 6:30 with a car blocking it because there couldn't be any more cars to be brought in there. You can put in another structure of 300 cars and if you have three events, one going at the Vic, one going at the Arlington, one going at the Granada, you will have zero sum. That means your policy is based on the least-used policy and it's going to be absolutely destroyed. The city of Santa Barbara has a history of not giving proper information to the public and/or to the council. Upper Delevina Street, George Girth stating, "We have a left-turn accident problem there." Absolutely zero left-hand turn problems for three years prior to him making that statement. The bicycle count, as people know, the bicycle counts were cratering from 1980 on up to 2003 when the city refused to do any more counts. The whole situation is gone beyond you. Your staff is not doing you a good job. They have intentionally not told the truth. St. Francis Traffic Program, city is in.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Daniel Diaz will be followed by Matthew Abrams. Is David here?
Yep.
Hi, Santa Barbara. First of all, David Puu, P-U-U. You can go to davidpuu.com or Ocean Lovers if you want to know more about what's happening in Fukushima. There's a lot of activity still ongoing that people aren't aware of and he has one of the more accurate outlets and he's been to the United Nations in Washington DC advocating as a lobbyist. So a lot of people in the community here have been asking about what's actually going on, so I figured this is a good way to let people know there are good outlets that are reliable. Secondly, the other day I was, I was going to the post office and a Channel 3 news camera guy was there with his right tire parked in the disabled parking space and he wasn't going to move, so I called the TV station while I was talking to the newsroom. He was setting up his tripod in the disabled parking space. It's amazing to see, K E Y T and news media people, you still don't have a right to park in disabled parking unless you have a placard. Let's not abuse it and show that we can work together as a community, please. And thirdly, the MTD issue that's been ongoing, still no resolve and upper staff and management have new cars. And it was just discovered that they pay about between $50, $75, and $100 a month in insurance, whereas all the drivers who do all the grunt work have to pay approximately $300 a month. There's something going on. And in the past, I had mentioned, let's get new board members who can actually get things resolved because we're not a big, huge city, you know? We're just a moderate, intimate little city and I think we can get along and get things accomplished because it's uncomfortable for the community as well as the drivers. Thank you very much, have a good day.
Matthew Abrams will be followed by Art Stevens.
I'm ceding my time to Art Stevens.
Okay, Art Stevens. And then Judy Stevens is here, I see you right there. Yes, I know. And so, Mr. Stevens, you have up to six minutes.
Well, here we are again on the gang injunction. I want to begin by welcoming the new council. I really do appreciate the time and energy that each of you puts into your job and I wish you well in the new year. And I continue to strongly oppose the gang injunction. I have been Board Chair of Pueblo, active in UCSB Ideas, Board Member of the Clergy and Laity for Economic Justice, and currently I serve on board to the Pro Youth Movement, Chair of Juvenile Justice Committee, and Palabra. And I'm a member of Poder's leadership and associate of Wise Drive. I only mention this because these affiliations indicate that I really believe in civic duty and especially for justice for all, especially the oppressed. Today, though, I'm not speaking for these groups, I'm speaking as an Episcopal priest. I want to assert God's unconditional love for all people and God's special concern for liberating people from oppression. The liberation theme runs throughout Hebrew and Christian scripture. I affiliate with each of the groups that I mentioned because I believe they seek to help Santa Barbara put into practice God's values of love and equality. God's prophet Amos cried out, "Let justice roll out unlike a river and righteousness like a never-failing stream." Jesus, my personal hero, challenged political and economic and religious and racist and sexist systems that oppressed people. He tried to awaken the indifferent. These are exactly the liberation goals that we of the Pro Youth Movement, Poder, Palabra, Wise Drive, and Ideas and allied groups are trying to assert. My special ministry as a priest has been to work with opposing people and groups to bring them together in creative, cooperative harmony based on shared values. I always found that anger was based on fear and that the way to resolve the anger was to come together and name our fears. We then looked at and named the unhelpful expectations of one another that these fears produce. And finally, we named our hopes, which turned out to be, in every case, the opposite of our fears. And then based on shared hopes, we developed strategies and programs that we thought would bring our hopes to fruition. We used a method that allowed each person or interest a respectful hearing. All of this work was done in public. That's the only way it could be trusted because I've learned a long time ago that when a group operates in secrecy, it always leads to distrust and fear on the part of those who aren't in on the decision-making group, especially when that group holds power over the quality of lives of others. Frankly, I can't think why the city council... Frankly, I can't think why the city council chose to operate in secrecy on a matter as important to the public at welfare as a gang injunction, unless that decision was based on fear of what the public would think of the council's individual members. And that choice to operate in secrecy, and then to produce a document that poses a very real threat of destroying many lives and relationships, of course, produced great fear and distrust among the people targeted. Why wouldn't it? I move on to name some reasons that I oppose the proposed gang injunction. Contrary to the gospel and the foundational documents of the Torah, the proposed injunction is racist. It targets only Latinos. Jesus many times said, "Do not be afraid," one of his most common statements. The mere threat of this injunction has caused great fear among Latino youth and their families, and this fear is justified, in my opinion. I know that police do apparently random cop stops, asking youth questions like, "Where are you going?" It is believed that police keep records of these stops even when the answers are innocent, records that can be used later as indications, contacts with the police that indicate the youth are gang members. I've seen that happen. There is guilt by association. Even without the injunction, pictures are taken of kids playing together, probably to be used to identify those not yet labeled gang members. That's what the kids think is happening, so that's their fear. With the injunction, guilt by association will be public policy. Perhaps unreasonably, I wonder whether Chief Sanchez, in order to justify his statement that gangs are running rampant, is using street tactics that treat people in ways that make joining a gang seem reasonable. After all, if you're going to be accused of gang membership, why not join? Do these kinds of tactics cause fear in families? You bet they do. At the first meeting of the Pro Youth Movement, a Latino just out of prison spoke. He said nothing offensive, and yet, on the way home, he was detained by the police.
You have 30 seconds left.
What, four minutes?
You had five and a half minutes so far. You have 27 seconds left.
Oh, can't do it in that. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so now you have 2 minutes, 25 seconds.
That'll do it. Proponents of the injunction persist in claiming that it targets only 30 people. They do this despite legal advice, including words like "east side" and "west side" clearly show the ultimate intent is to target many more people, especially friends, relatives, and even casual associates of the police arbitrarily label gang members. This is guilt by association. It's a hard thing that in this country has caused so many innocent people so much harm. The Pro Youth Movement, despite its opposition to any injunction whatever, worked with legal counsel to draft a revised injunction that indeed would have limited the scope of the injunction to the 30 people named. If the council's intent was to restrict only a specific 30, why did it not adopt this amendment? The injunction causes fear among property owners who face declining values for homes in or near their so-called safety zones. It causes fear within the tourist industry. Won't some tourists choose to avoid coming to a city noted for gang violence? Jesus' primary theme is God's unconditional love for us and the need for us to love each other the same way. To me, to love in this context means to honor. I don't think any of the affected people in groups I've mentioned could feel very honored by the fashioning and wording of the injunction. Jesus urges compassion and forgiveness. So have many religious and nonreligious people out of their own experiences of being oppressed. He brought people together in order to advance unconditional love and the common good. We all know, it is so easy to mean well and yet make mistakes, and to spend energy justifying those mistakes. We've all done it, and it almost always ends in grief. We grieve, destroyed relationships, and lost opportunities to do the good things we really wanted to do, and that we would have done if we'd met and worked together in ways that honor and trust our own best selves and the best selves of others.
You have 30 seconds left.
Now, we can view situations as problems or as invitations. Problems produce negative energy of fear and anger. Invitations produce positive energy and cooperation based on shared hopes. Instead of a problem, the situation we face can be a wonderful invitation to come together in mutual forgiveness for the mistakes we all have made and to fashion new ways of working together. This council can begin afresh, so can we who oppose the injunction.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Jose Gil will be next, followed by Jorge Ramirez.
Sorry, I didn't get through.
Jose Gil? Jose? Jorge Ramirez? Brandon Morse?
May I have my wife's speak first, please?
Okay, can I have your name?
Robin Morse.
Robin Morse, okay, come on up and be followed by Brandon Morse. And there are a number of people here who have waived their time to you. We'll get to that when we get to that. Thank you very much, go ahead.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Robin Morse. Today, I'm speaking as Vice President of the Santa Barbara City College Republican Club and the Secretary of the Santa Barbara City College Free Thinking Patriots. I would like to congratulate you all on your victories during the last election that was hard fought and oftentimes very tiring. I worked with my husband, members of the club, and several conservative groups during the campaign, oftentimes encouraging individuals to vote and engage in local dialogue. No matter which side of the political spectrum we stand on, we believe that one serious issue in our community is a lack of dialogue. Obviously, as a Republican, I would have liked to have seen more Republicans elected to this election, and I would like to recognize both Frank Hotchkiss and his victory, but also wish Dale Francisco the best of luck in his congressional bid. As a Free Thinking Patriot, I would like to congratulate Mr. Greg Hart, Mr. Bendy White, and Mayor Helene Schneider for their well-fought victories. Now that the election is over, it is time for us to come together, put aside our partisan hats, and do what is best for the city and the county of Santa Barbara. To give some background about myself, I attended Santa Barbara City College and studied early childhood education and general studies, and I went to Brigham Young University and obtained an associate's degree in general studies. And then, I was at the Idaho campus and transferred to Hawaii, where I received a bachelor's in special education, and I hope to be completing certification as well as seeking a master's in special education as well. While we believe that this body has taken major steps in alternative measures to the issue of juvenile delinquency, we hope that you will remember your oath taken just a short time ago. Please recognize that controversial programs like this--
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Morse, let me just see, you have a number of people have waived their time. Nicole Collins, thank you. Jeanne Morburg, thank you. Brooke Robbins, okay. Aurora Marquez. Marcy Estrada. Therese Cordero. Valencia Balodazar, I think I pronounced that right, thank you. Kathy Swift, okay. So, Mr. Morse--
I may, I agree with you.
Hold on just a second. Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, four. That gives you 18 minutes. Do you need all 18 minutes?
I believe so, but if I may, my father was just going to take 60 seconds of your time, and he's already--
You can take some, if he put in a speaker slip, he can--
I was going to ask if he could speak before me, just one last person. I appreciate your--
Okay, if you can come on up, and then, like you said, 60 seconds, go right ahead. Can I have your name, please?
My name is Rick Morse. I live in Fresno, California.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm honored to be here today to speak on behalf of my son, and I'll try to make it as brief as the 60 seconds. Please let me know when I'm getting close.
Clock, I'm going to stop the clock. There's a clock right there, so you can see it.
All right. When my son first approached me about the issue of the gang injunction, I realized it was controversial, and I realized that he'd be seen as being soft on crime. So, he asked me to analyze the gang injunction, and I do have a little bit of background in the legal aspect of it. And the one thing that concerned me above all else is two or more people behaving lawfully. You can't enjoin two or more people from behaving lawfully. That's a fundamental flaw in your pleadings. You're going to have lawsuits over that language in and of itself. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, I live in a war zone. I live in the Tower District of Fresno, it's Southwest Division. It's not unusual to hear bullets going off pretty regularly, maybe three or four times a month. There are homeless people using the bushes next door, urinals, and bathrooms. There are people breaking windows. That's a war zone.
Thank you.
I'd like to yield the remainder of my time. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Morse, you have up to 18 minutes, and I don't know if you need all of it, but that's what you have waived to you. Go ahead.
Just give me one second, please.
I'm starting the clock now.
First of all, I'd like to finish my wife's comments from earlier. While we believe that this body has taken major steps in alternative measures to the issue of juvenile delinquency, we hope that you will remember your oath taken just a short time ago. Please recognize that these controversial programs like this, when decided behind closed doors, can have major unintended consequences. One unintended consequence we hope that you will consider for the new year in this new term with this fresh, new ability to analyze this program is the impact that businesses, property values, tourism, and civic engagement will have if this is passed. As a student club, we are concerned about the impact on foreign students that may choose other places to go to school, or the impact on current students having the burden of proof to show where they have been or that they are actually on their way to school. I understand that these kinds of legal actions are complex and can be difficult to understand. I specialize in law and have taken much time to try to explain this to my wife. I've looked at the 400-page document filed by the city in December, and we have both wondered, have any of you actually read the 437-page document filed in your name? I mean, this isn't your name. The city council, the representatives of the city of Santa Barbara, which means that you represent us, and we have read this, and we're telling you that there are some really big issues with this gang injunction. And I'm hoping that if you're willing to put your name on this, you will have at least taken the time to read it. Let's be clear, you are all responsible for the consequences of the injunction, and you're doing this in the name of we, the people. We come here to ask you that you represent us all as a body, because we do not have an individual to plea at this at-large system. I wondered, since I moved to Santa Barbara County, or since my wife has moved to Santa Barbara County in high school, she's never once been accosted by a gang member or threatened in the proposed safety zone under the pretext claimed by the motion for the preliminary injunction. Have any of you, honestly, have any of you? Through Robin's lower division of schooling, since she first started working in Santa Barbara, almost all of her jobs have been in the downtown area. She's worked for the Metro Theaters for years and got a job with downtown city parking, and often had issues with drunks that couldn't find a bathroom quickly enough, or copulating in the elevator. Last month, she wrote an article in the Ed-Hat that a majority of the gang activity in Santa Barbara is vandalism, tagging, and public intoxication. Members of the ACLU and other legal civil rights groups, these programs are intended and designed for a war zone, according to the Acuna case. We have spoken with many business owners, property owners, residents, students, and tourists, and we feel that this city is declaring more than 75% of the city a war zone. You should see the response we get. It's an absolute shock that you believe that this city is a war zone. And with all of the pleasantries we had earlier about how safe the city is and how great we've done at making sure these restorative policies work, we're declaring it a war zone. We do not present this message to be critical of the job you have done. To the contrary, we present this message to congratulate you for all that you've accomplished. It speaks volumes that the worst crime that we are constantly being committed by our minor, tagging, et cetera, with the occasional issue of, with the occasional more serious issue. It is a great testament to the preventative programs that are in place. During your tenure, crime rates have declined without the need of the gang injunction. We are here not to challenge you or to cause a confrontation, but to offer you information that you haven't previously considered. I am sure when you first started this process, you thought it would be relatively quick and inexpensive, that the community would embrace the security versus over-liberty argument. But three years later, and almost a million and a half dollars that have been spent, it's just the tip of the iceberg. The cost to litigate appeals will be in the millions of dollars. The cost to enforce and appeal each instance that the GI is implemented will be millions of dollars. Instantly, we will lose 12% of the property values in the majority of the proposed gang injunction area, which is close to 75% of the town. Mr. Hotchkiss and other city council members have done a wonderful job bringing those tour boats, but when this hits the national press, when this hits the national press, people are going to say that it's a war zone, and they're no longer going to come here. They're going to dock elsewhere. The fact is that less than 50% of registered voters participated in the last election is telling that the people do not feel that it's worth engaging in this process, because it does not work anyways. My wife is an educator, and she has a lot of other alternatives that I would hope that she would take time to talk to her about. I would also ask that, I would also ask, when was the last time that you saw an outcry from the community like this before? Who are you representing in this action? On a final note, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Kathy Mario for establishing the Pro Youth Movement and being dedicated to keeping her heart in the community. When this community called for, she answered. I understand that it can be difficult being the voice of reason in a sea of controversy, but the fact that you are willing to engage speaks volumes about your character and intentions as a city council member, to represent these people here behind me and develop solutions, not excuses. Please rescind this preliminary injunction, place the gang injunction on the agenda as an actionable item, please rescind the permanent injunction request, and let's come together to develop some alternative solutions. And I would like to thank you for your time. My name is Brandon Morse, and I'm representing the Santa Barbara County Young Republicans Federated today. I'm also representing the Republican Liberty Caucus. I would like to personally congratulate you on your success in this past election. I know that it was hard fought with a lot of emotion. We recognize that we do not agree 100% of the time, but we still foster open channels of communication. I had the honor of working with members of both parties. I spent many hours working for the Republican slate, including Mr. Hotchkiss, and I was impressed by his willingness to talk openly about his policy decisions, including the policies that brought in the cruise ships, tourism, and he was also willing to talk about policies we didn't agree with. Of course, I would have loved to see more success, including my friend Jason Nelson to have joined you, but as a friend once said after the election, "Despite our differences, we're all cordial and find what we can agree to work on." Mr. Hart, it was an honor to walk the precincts with you, collect data by directly asking the people in the proposed safety zones their level of knowledge and proposed thoughts on the solutions. Through the data that we received, we now know that there's a large segment of our community, as you can clearly see here today, that is against the gang injunction. They feel that the current trend is an overwhelming success with the programs that are already in place, and that gang violence is significantly on the decline. The proposed gang injunction is not to be given any praise to that, but it will cause significant impacts, including decreases in tourism, decreases in tourism, decreases in property values, decreases in business walking on State Street, because you guys are declaring State Street the front lines of a war zone. Do we understand what kind of implications that's going to cause whenever we have business owners that are going to say, "Do I want to move my business on the front line of a war zone?" I personally wouldn't, and I don't think that a lot of people that are thinking about where are they going to put their houses, where are they going to put their businesses, they're going to think the same thing. Today, our motto is "Solutions, Not Excuses," and I'd like to talk about a few of those for a moment. In the city of Fresno, they've developed a program recently with the 7-Elevens. It's kind of ingenious, if you ask me. They have a small set of books behind the counter. Any kids can go back there, they check out a book, they write a small summary about the book, they get a free Slurpee. How awesome is that? What about we do this with the bike shop down on State Street, the pizza shop down on State Street? What if we do that sort of thing in our community? Don't you think that that might be a better way to engage our businesses, as opposed to tell them, "Hey, your business is the front line of a war zone"? I think so. I have been a huge advocate for programs like the Police Activities League, Primo Boxing, real programs that we can reach out to the community and have meaningful solutions. One of the things that I would like to point out about my conservative friends here on the city council, they had enough wisdom to understand what kind of a negative impact putting a blue line around this city was going to have, whenever you're talking about tourism and property values. That blue line is just the tip of the iceberg. You're talking about calling our town a war zone. What do you think that's going to have as far as an impact on our businesses? I know a lot of you guys have businesses that are in this community, in this enjoined area. The injunction hasn't worked. There's been some people that have said, and I think that it's wise words from back in World War II, "At first, they came for the Jews, but I was not a Jew, so I did not speak. And then, they came for the communists, but I was not communist, so I did not speak. And then, they came for the socialists, but I was not socialist, so I did not speak. And now, they've come for me, but there's-- At first, they came for the Jews, but I was not a Jew, so I did not speak. And then they came for the communists, but I was not communist, so I did not speak. And then they came for the socialists, but I was not socialist, so I did not speak. And now they've come for me, but there's no one left to speak. We are here today as that voice. We are not going to look back and say, all these decisions that were made in private without the accountable vote, without saying, you know what, I believe that this is what's best for my community, I'm going to bring it to the people, I'm going to ask them, what do you think about a preliminary injunction? Let me go about that for a moment. Preliminary injunctions are typically done at the very beginning of the process, so it's quite troublesome for people in the legal community that see these sorts of tactics being put forward, given only 30 days to respond to 437 pages, of which you all put your names on that you haven't even read. That's troubling for a lot of the people here. The fact that $1.5 million is just the beginning. You're talking every single time someone has an enhancement, they're going to appeal, they're going to sue because of wrongful arrest, and it's going to go through the appellate process all the way up to the Supreme Court, because there is new ground here that you guys are trying to break. I plead with you, we are not anti-police, we are not anti-city council. We just want you to understand what you're doing, and how it affects all of us. You see the people that are still here. This sort of thing doesn't happen here in Santa Barbara. This sort of thing doesn't happen in most communities where you have this kind of unified voice. I don't see not one person here saying the gang injunction is a good idea. The Democrat Central Committee has voted against this. The Republican Liberty Caucus has voted against this. Many people in the Republican, the young Republicans have questions about this. People at Santa Barbara City College, the faculty, the ACLU. There are more questions than answers that are being brought before the community, and for some reason, we're the ones that are asking it. We're asking you guys to ask these questions, because we can't. We can't go to Cam Sanchez and say, why is it that you're placing DUIs in the same category as gang offenses? Why aren't you separating those numbers from adults and youth? Those are things that we would like to know. In January of 2013, he said that he would. In December of 2013, he said that he would, and he still hasn't. Now, I just think that that is just a basic question that should be risen. You know, I don't think that's too much to ask, so we can break down the numbers and say, how many vandalisms were they? How many public intoxications were they? What's the standard for a gang crime? Is it different if I get pulled over for a DUI, as opposed to someone that has tattoos, or the color of their clothes? Or am I going to be somehow implicated because I'm reaching out to these youth? Is the clergy going to be somehow implicated as an associate because we're reaching out to these youth? Where does the line get drawn? I think that that's something that we really need to reflect on right now. There are people that have invited you to come talk to them and say, we have alternate We should provide tax incentives for these companies to provide job skills for our kids. These labels have psychological implications, both to the people that are labeled, and the people that do the labeling. All we're asking is, we're coming from an educated community, we're coming from a diverse background, and saying, we all look at this and we question, we have some questions, but we don't see the city council raising those questions. People have asked over and over again, please, put this on the agenda, so that it can be an actionable item, so you can have people from both sides come and say why it's good and why it's bad, and hold it to a public vote. And that still hasn't happened. This preliminary injunction really needs to be withdrawn. It's going to be interesting, it's going to be interesting if the judge does agree with a lot of the legal minds in the city of Santa Barbara, and I don't see how they're not going to be able to, because you have the declaration of one officer compared to the outcry of the community and legal precedents. I would just hope that you would be willing to put it out there, stop this preliminary injunction. We all know that it was done in a secretive fashion, that there isn't enough time for the defense to be able to adequately respond to something like that. We only have two months left before the actual trial is supposed to be set. With the decline in crime, there's no exigent circumstances, there's no exigent circumstances that justify a preliminary injunction. We have a unique opportunity today. We have a unique opportunity to say, you know what, we didn't understand these unintended consequences that could come before. We don't have to say that we're wrong for what we've tried in the past. What we can say is that we weren't anticipating this cost. We weren't anticipating this kind of public outcry. We weren't anticipating that maybe the people want us to represent something else. And I think that that's a very honorable thing to do, is to say, you know what, I recognize what the people are saying, we have a cross-section of the community here, let's put it on the agenda, let's follow what a majority of our party has said, and let's stop it. Let's find alternative measures. Let's engage in nonprofit organizations, let's hold nonprofit organizations that are getting funding from the city accountable for the outcomes of their work. I know it's been a little interesting sometimes seeing me at some of these meetings, being a conservative voice, but I really think that that's what we need to do. We need to find where that common ground is. And everybody agrees in the Bill of Rights, everybody agrees in the Constitution, everybody agrees that prohibiting somebody from simply standing in a public place, from doing nothing else but riding their bike to school, and then having them have to have the burden of proof to show, well, I'm just really going to my class right now, to put in our newsletters to all of our supporters that there are 32 named defendants, and not 30 named defendants. Right? I mean, let's just be at least honest with the people. We've dropped the John Does, that was a great start in the right direction. That was an awesome start in the right direction. We understand what the unintended consequences could potentially be with these unincorporated entities, because it does prohibit constitutionally protected behavior. We already have the tools available for people that are violating crimes, that are committing bad behaviors. I have to say that I am humbled and honored that I was able to have as many people yield their time as they were. And I would like to point out that all the people that gave me that honor were from different backgrounds, different areas of this community. And one thing that we would all like to say, we do not feel afraid when we are walking in our communities. We do not get accosted by gang members on a regular basis. We do not feel that our community is a war zone. We agree with the way that you described it earlier, and we're wanting to keep it that way. Having this injunction be implemented is definitely the wrong direction. I understand I only have 52 seconds left, I'm keeping an eye on it, and I appreciate your patience, I really do. But this is an important issue, and I am speaking for so many people. It's not just me. It's not just my clubs. It's not just Republicans, it's not just Democrats, it's everybody that's here right now. They stayed, even though they believed that it was their right to speak out on number nine, they stayed, because they want you to understand that we don't agree with this gang injunction, that we want the voice of the people to be represented. The Democrat Central Committee, the Republican Liberty Caucus, the Republican Clubs at Santa Barbara City College, the students, the people, no matter what their race, no matter what the religion, everybody that I've talked to has said that this community is safe. We aren't being accosted, and we don't need a gang injunction to stop some taggers. We don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Nia Burke, is Nia Burke here? Okay, if we can continue, please, thank you. If you want to continue a public comment, please, thank you. Is Nia Burke here? She... No? Okay, Isabel James, and then you'll be followed by Marissa Garcia.
Hello, I'm Isabel James. As you take office, I remind you that you're here to serve the community, so please listen to the community. We are here telling you loud and clear what we need. As my new city council members, I want you to think about these questions I'm going to ask you. Why is the police department doing investigations of its own department? Why are we putting a $500,000 gang injunction bigger than Oakland's to serve 12 people that live here? Why does the police department get 60% of the city budget? I'm tired of seeing my community imitate, sorry, I'm tired of seeing my community harassed, intimidated, and brutalized at the hands of the police department you're supposed to oversee. You have just sworn to serve our civil rights, so please do that. And Dale Francis, I'm very insulted that you're sitting here reading a book while we're trying to bring our concerns to you.
Excuse me. All right, please, I've asked you to stop clapping if you want to. We've gone way beyond what a regular public comment would be. I want to hear what you have to say, but you really have to refrain from clapping or hissing, and just want to hear what people have to say at the podium. So, Marissa Garcia, and then Michael Gutierrez.
Good afternoon. I wanted to start out by personally thanking Kathy Mario for being the true local hero of this community, and standing up for all of us and our rights, and trying to stop this injunction. And Greg Hart, I want to personally thank you as well for standing up for us and believing in us. It means not just a lot to me, but to everybody standing here today, and it just means so much. So, thank you so much, from the bottom of my heart, for standing up for what's right. But to talk about the gang injunction, there's so many things that are wrong about it. There's more things that are wrong than right. And there's been a lot of, there's a lot of things I could be standing here telling you today, you know, from the fact that it's too much money, to it's only going to help 12 people, to the negative impacts that it's going to place on our hard-working family communities. But you've heard all that, and there's been so much stuff that's been said that isn't, that isn't right. Mayor Schneider, you said in your speech earlier that you were looking forward to this year with a lot of, you know, new opportunities, a lot of optimism, and I hope so too. And so, I am urging all of you, and asking you, begging you almost, to listen to us, and listen to the fact that this gang injunction is not right. And lastly, again, I'm here on behalf of my husband, Marcel Garcia, who is on the injunction list. I'm here on behalf of him to tell you that, yes, while he's made mistakes in the past, he's changed, and it is never okay to punish somebody for the rest of their life for mistakes they made so long ago. So, I urge you to please take this gang injunction, put it on the agenda, dismiss it, and focus on positive solutions in our community. Thank you.
Michael Gutierrez, I'm going to give you one last warning. Thank you. Michael Gutierrez, followed by David Lorenghia, or Larangada.
Hello, my name is Michael Gutierrez. I want to say thank you, everyone here. You, my city council looks wonderful. I'm really excited for 2014. I'm sure there's really great things going to happen, a lot of changes, a lot of renovations. And I'm standing here today on the regards of, I don't believe that the gang injunction is the right solution, and I believe that there's, there's definitely, definitely better methods to handle this situation with, with the youth, and how to engage the community better. And lastly, I just want, just want to invite you, the whole city council, to get to know us, you know, take a walk in our communities, go down San Andres, go to Supercucas, go to the Lady of Guadalupe on a Sunday, see the community, get to know us, before you make a terrible mistake, because this is affecting people, and we're just, who are just like you, and just get to know us, so maybe that might change your thought. All right, thank you.
David Larangada will be followed by Bob Hanson.
Hello, my name is David Larangada. I'd like to thank you for your time and for hearing all of us today. I am standing here as a member of this community, just as you all are a member of this community. You know, you talk about, or we all like to say that we care about our family and friends, and, you know, that they're the most important to us, and right now, that's what we're doing. We're looking out for our family and our friends within the community. We're watching out for our backs, for their back, just like they would watch out for ours. So, right now, we just need to all stand together and look at a better, a better solution to this, because it's very evident that the community does not stand for this gang injunction. And as representatives of the community, it shouldn't even be a question whether this is going to pass or not, because, you know what, there's, if it does pass, I'll tell you what, the biggest gang that's going to be, be not liked by the community is going to be the city council for passing this injunction, and that's just the fact of the matter, because, you know, everything down from the tourism to the property, like everyone's been talking about, it's me going down, but that's just a small part about it. It affects the intimate families, you know, the people that are really affected by it. It affects them on a whole another level. They don't care about the tourism, they don't care about any of that. They care about their own family and friends, just like all of you care about your family and friends. So, just keep that in mind, and know that, you know, this gang injunction shouldn't pass for many reasons, and as you're just sworn to hold the Constitution, you know, to truth, you should definitely know that this violates the Constitution. So, please, keep that in mind, and I thank you for your time.
Bob Hanson will be followed by, is Lazarus here? I think he left. Mariah Kluzmeyer will be next, after Bob Hanson.
I brought a sign, but you said I can't have signs, right? And someone said, why, why can't I have a sign, even if the mayor says I can't? Because it's "Stop Hate and Propaganda Towards Homeless." And that happens a lot in this community, because we basically are hateful, and we spread propaganda. And in the movie that Mandela was in, at the very end, he talks about, "We learn to hate, but we can learn to love, and it's better for the human heart." But we are one community in America that's trying to protect this turf, with the restorative policing, and we're putting lots of money out there, and we need a national agenda. You talked about it a few weeks ago, of how our federal money is dwindling and all. And so, in The Independent, on page 13, there's a whole article about the restorative policing. Ed Olson's been on there for three years, and it's, it's an honest story, but in the end, it sits there and says, "There's a push countywide to make sure warming centers or shelters don't become an ad hoc shelter. We don't want them to provide so many services that the homeless become dependent on them. What we want those to remain are simply temporary shelters, so they can get out of the elements, so they won't be dying from exposure." Well, in this whole article, and we all seem to agree now, there's the homeless that are in programs, and the homeless on the streets. Well, I have some friends that are alcoholics in our parks, we have people that are alcoholics in homes, in the bars, and they're people. So, they drink. It's a terrible thing, because basically, you drink enough, you're going to die. So, we have about four seconds left. We need to stop the hate and the propaganda towards the homeless, and we need to help all the homeless, the ones that were saying, we don't want help, we need to have a...
Okay, Lazarus, you're going to...
We need to have...
Yes, go right ahead. Lazarus, you're giving, go ahead, keep going, Bob.
So, what we need is a 24-hour center. Let the restorative policing run it even. We all work together, because the ones that were sitting there in this article, in the restorative policing, we're trying to protect our turf, there needs to be a national agenda, but we keep sitting there, the ones that need the most help, that have mental problems, alcohol problems, drug problems, whatever issues in their life, and not getting on a program, we want to get them out of our community. Well, we need to be an example, just like we've been examples in other areas, Earth Day and stuff, that we are going to step forward and help through restorative policing, not just to get a one-way ticket out of town and other things, but a 24-hour center, that someone can come there and feel like, hey, I can come, and I can get a blanket. I know I have a problem. I talked to a person the other day, he was diagnosed with a couple of issues. Hove got him a place in LA. He lasted about three weeks, they gave him pancakes for breakfast, baloney for lunch, and a nice dinner, but he was dual-diagnosed, and they don't have a program. He comes back and tells Hove, and Hove just kind of ignores him. We need to have these things in our own community that help with alcohol, drug, mental health, and me, I need help. I got Nancy, but, you know, Nancy and I are our own little entity, and just like in real life, we all have our own little issues and stuff, but we make it, and we need to be proud of what we're doing. And what we're not proud of is that there's really no solution to restorative policing. It goes around and around, we try to get rid of some. And the kids in black, they're good kids, they're just in black. And the whole thing about the injunction, all, our stories, everybody's stories when they're teenagers, they would scare the hell out of everybody if we told our real stories, what we did when we were teens, between 10 and... what we did when we were teens between 10 and 12 and 18 or whatever. I mean, we did some crazy things.
Thank you very much.
So now we're taking these kids. So anyway, one second, thank you.
Thank you. Mariah Kluzmeyer will be followed by Crisito Herrera Cruz.
Hello, my name is Mariah Kluzmeyer. I'm a nursing student at Santa Barbara City College. I'm here to oppose the gang injunction because I think it's ridiculous. When I walk down State Street, I'm not scared of people who look like gang members, I'm scared of college students who are drunk coming out of the clubs. Those are the people that hurt me in particular. The, so, and the fact that this gang injunction is only affecting 12 people is completely insane. You could be spending your money on so many other things. It's make this city more effective for students, more effective for the working-class people who have to work here. And, sorry, I have a cold. So, and as somebody who's actually lived in North Las Vegas and, and in Albuquerque in the South Valley, I feel like they realize the gang injunctions were not going to work for their gang problems, and they actually have very serious gang problems. And there's no way that a gang injunction will work here because you don't have a problem with that. You have problems with drunk college students on State Street, like assaulting people. You have problems with cops assault, shooting people. You have problems with so many other things. This is not where you need to be putting your time and energy into. And you know what, it's something that the community really, really cares about. This isn't even on the agenda and we're here, we've packed the comments here. And you haven't even put it on the agenda, and we'll pack that when you do. And I think you know that, and so you won't put it there. But people keep coming back, even if it's not on the agenda, and they keep speaking about it. And I think that says a lot, and I think you really need to pay attention to that because this is something the community cares about so much that they're just going to keep showing up and having a comment about it, even when it's not on your agenda and you're not acknowledging it, except in your back, your back room meetings. So I think you guys need to pay attention to this and I think to move forward.
Thank you, your time's up.
Oh, thank you.
Crisito Herrera Cruz and is Gonzalo Rios? Gonzalo? Okay, so you're yielding your time?
I believe I had another person too, Madam Chair.
Sir, who else is yielding their time to Crisito? I don't have another slip with your name on it. What's your name? Brita Young? Okay. So you have up to six minutes, Crisito.
I stand in solidarity with the family Takedina. May Brian Takedina rest in peace due to police violence. I will have one minute in silence for all those victims of violence at the hands of police officers and even Crisito Herrera Cruz. It's a documented filed, this is me waking up in 2005, court documents. One minute of silence for them. May everybody rest in peace and have the peace in their hearts to do right. Philosophically, as our legislator leaders, you all shall have a pocket Constitution in your pocket. When we're people talking and articulating, under Article 3, Section 3, it states, "Treason against the United States shall consist only of levying war against them or in adhering to enemies, giving them aid and comfort." So in that sense, by declaring that we live in a war or hostile zone in Santa Barbara, I think we got it flipped. I think we have to look at the legalities. When we look at the legalities, and there's four definitions, Public Nuisance Corporation Code and Pino Code 186, 20, 23, 30, of how to basically classify Americanos, Chicanos, Chicanas in our community, that's hard. They're not a corporation. You can't find the east side. You can't find the west side in the Secretary of State's Business Portal. So how can you govern that under Corporations Code, Madam? So the fallacy of the arguments shall be proven with legal prudence and advocacy in the Superior Courts. In 2009, I talked about positive enrichment in our community. In 2011, when I ran for city council again, I was against it, thanks to Larry Nembor and the Women of League of Women's Voters for that production. You could find it on YouTube, where I say, "I'm totally against it on constitutional principles." When I ran in 2013 with some of the predecessors here that won, congratulations. "Ora, a su servicio a la comunidad." Please do your work for the community, please. In that sense, I was against it for constitutional principles. So if this does get enacted through the Superior Court, don't worry, this is going to go to the district courts right down the street in Ventura. And that broad stroke that you're trying to cover will be overturned. And then we're going to realize wasted money on stupid fallacy legal arguments. Now we look at the human cost. No one talks about the human cost. What has happened to the gentlemen, to the young ladies that have been deported? What happens to the families, the mothers, the kids that are not able to congregate in the freedom of expression, in the freedom of their own will in this community? We have to think about that. When we look at the positive enrichment programs, we're not trying enough. The only organization that has the CDBG money was 52 organizations. Primo Boxing was the only one that didn't get enacted. Now they're gone. No one's questioning that. 52 organizations, the one that was working with our youth, out. Why is it Casa Esperanza gets $101,000 of that CDBG money? That's over 14%. We shouldn't be policing mental health issues and acting as a de facto social service provider in our community. We have to get real. Where's the leadership? You've been elected to create the leadership in our community. Positive enrichment programs, youth services. Mr. Ben De White has talked about the stakeholders in economic development. I've been saying public infrastructure, youth empowerment, adult services. Well, Program 2112 Economic Development Program doesn't have one person hired there. If you're talking about short-term and long-term goals, let's plan for it. Let's just not throw it up like hot air. 2112, Mr. White. We need economic plans for this small community. We could do much better than that. I know you all have been elected for that reason. I pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation, we're all that one nation here. There's no you or I, us and them. But if you continue polarizing the situation, oh, it's going to get ugly. I can get all Chicano on you real quick. Remember the swastikas? I know who did that. Remember? Thank you. Otra vez a la comunidad, le vamos a decir, estos tales por cuales no tienen el entendimiento ni la filosofía para representarnos. We're 50% of the population, but we're still a racially polarized city, dais. We need representation. District-based elections is very important to this community. This at-large system rubbing elbows and being cahoots of tourism and dollar and profit is not worthy of the human cost. We the people. We are the people. You're the people. So if we say "we the people," let's act on it. I just want to pray these last 10 seconds that we have in our hearts the compassion to treat us as humans. Even in our death, you're all going to be fucking knocking us.
Your time's up. Miki Flax will be followed by Ann Teffler and then Alberto Cruzades.
It seems a long time ago now, but in the earlier festivities, two themes seemed to be foremost. One was the Constitution, which the newly-elected folks had to swear allegiance to. And the other was the openness of our community and of the making of its laws and the engagement of the citizens in that process. Seems to me both have been violated by this whole gang injunction business. It is truly guilt by association, which was tried in this country in the 50s. FBI agents would question people about whether their parents were communists or whether their sons-in-law were communists. And that was grounds for people to lose their jobs. That was eventually thrown out by the courts. Guilt by association is not part of our legal system, and yet it is the basis, really, of a gang injunction. The other basis of it is that it punishes or enjoins perfectly legal, proper behavior. That, too, is not part of the Constitution that you folks swore to uphold. In terms of openness, the Brown Act ensures openness, makes exceptions for matters of litigation. And it was under that small door that the Brown Act provides that you guys drove a truck through, saying that because this would have to come to court, that you had the right to decide this in private, to continue to work on it in private, to not have a public hearing. This isn't a public hearing. This is people venting. You, I go to a lot of public hearings, and after the hearing, people on the council get a chance to speak and respond to what's being said. That's not the case here. And you have never taken a vote in public. That is directly contrary to both the Constitution and principles of openness. Thank you.
Ann Teffler will be followed by Alberto Cruzades. We have quite a few speaker slips left. I'm going to ask you to please, we've been doing this for almost an hour, to please be succinct in your comments so we can continue on with our council meeting. This is, we're, I'm being very flexible with the public comment period, so if you could be succinct, I appreciate it. Go ahead, thank you.
Hi, my name is Annie Telfer. I currently live in Lompoc, but I lived on the streets in Santa Barbara for a long time, on and off over a period of a couple of years. And during that time, I literally slept outside, mostly within the proposed safety zone of this gang injunction. And I'd like those of you who haven't had that experience to think about how vulnerable you are, literally sleeping out in public. And during that time, I did deal with violence. But as vulnerable as I was and as much violence as I saw, I can't remember ever being afraid of either gang members or the people that we just assume are gang members based on the way they look. And this makes me wonder, when we talk about making the city safe, what kind of safety are we talking about? If we're talking about safety from bodily harm, I think that that's a right that we all have, that we all deserve. But that's not what I think we're talking about because I don't think that's been seriously threatened. I think what we're talking about is the safety for people to never have to see somebody different than them, the safety for certain people to never be confronted with the, you know, the visible icons of poverty, like the, you know, public urinations in bushes or the vandalism. I don't think that this gang injunction protects anything. I think that we are already safe when we can stand together. Thank you.
Alberto Cruzades will be followed by Zachary King. And then Carolyn Torres.
Good afternoon, my name is Alberto Casares. I'm an organizer with the Youth Justice Coalition based out of Los Angeles, California. We're here in support of the people of Santa Barbara and challenging this gang injunction. And I could tell you from personal experience, from being on a gang injunction, that it's not easy to live with, it completely changes your life. You know, you could go to jail for talking to your, to your neighbors, you could go to jail for even talking to your family. You could, you could lose your housing over gang injunction. And it completely changes everything. You have to watch your back from, I used to have to watch my back walking to school and from school, you know, so it completely changes everything. And also, it's proven that, that in, in communities where there's injunctions, there's violence, and violence increases, but violence by police. And, and just in, since September, there's been three officer shootings. And that's, and injunction hasn't even been enforced yet. So the, the police violence is already increasing, and it would only increase where, after the injunction, if, if it's, if it's placed, it would only increase even more. So, so I would just like to say that, keep in mind that imagine if y'all had an injunction, y'all wouldn't have to come into this building, y'all could go to jail for talking to each other, or even coming to this building, being seen in this building, you could, you could be sent to jail for. So, and I would just like to say, Ann was saying that, that injunctions create prisons without walls.
Zachary King will be followed by Carolyn Torres.
Letters from friends and family to inmates in Santa Barbara County Jail have been banned. An unconstitutional and irrational gang injunction has been imposed on our city. Brian Takedana was killed by a Santa Barbara police officer and no justice was done. The pattern here is abusive and unaccountable government. We had to teach each other about the mail ban in the jail. We had to go to the press. We had to investigate and report on the gang injunction ourselves with no help from our city. We call for a civilian-led investigation into killings by police. Our city insists that the police investigate themselves. It's time to stop imposing your arrogant agendas on the people of this city. We need civilian oversight boards to investigate police wrongdoing established immediately. We need an end to closed-door policies like the gang injunction. We need directly democratic civilian control over such policies with the possibility of abolishing them. Give us the power to govern our city if you won't govern yourselves transparently and with respect to your role as servants of the public. A lot of us care about security in our neighborhoods. We want peace and safety, but we understand that you can't impose peace and safety from above without justice and without democracy. All you'll accomplish is silence, not peace, until that silence breaks. Oh, and public comment is not like, it's not like a privilege, like it's your job. So stop threatening to take it away.
Carolyn Torres will be followed by Nafisa Tony.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Torres. I'm from Orange County, California, where we have just now won a federal lawsuit against the Orange County DA and the Orange PD regarding the unconstitutionality of gang injunctions. So I do want to put that on your radar. There are a lot of ways to challenge a gang injunction in the federal courts. It took four years in Orange. They, the DA and the PD are now fighting on who should pay the over $3 million to the ACLU. So I would want to make you all aware of that in Orange County. So I'm here in solidarity, excuse my cough, with the work of Poder has done fighting against a gang injunction, advocating for youth in our communities. I'm an educator and part of an organization called Chicanos Unidos. I would like to remind the council that y'all have the power to stop a gang injunction. A gang injunction is nothing more than a misinformed, unjust idea. It is not something that has to occur. Just because some person or group decided to pitch the idea doesn't mean the council has to, one, support it, or two, fund it. You are the governing body of the city, you can decide to let it go. It is within your power and responsibility to take a stand for the community. Let the gang injunction go. Gang injunctions are ineffective, unconstitutional, and unnecessary, and we'll forever mar the kind of city council you want to be and the kind of city that you want Santa Barbara to be. Orange County, LA, and most of the state is watching to see what Santa Barbara's going to do.
Nafisa Tony will be followed by Martine Leva.
Hello, my name is Nafisa Tony, and I wanted to first wish you guys all a Happy New Year. I just wanted to say that I am a product of the United States of America. When I, when I was a child, you know, I had dreams similar to you all. However, we may have grew up in different places. And as I got older, I realized that I may not have the opportunity to sit in a chair like you because my, my skin isn't white. And I, and I wasn't in, in a place to where dreams are fulfilled, I guess you would say. I'm here, I'm here in solidarity with all my people who came to, to oppose this injunction. I'm one who, who has suffered from this through personal experience. And it wasn't any of my friends who, who labeled me gang members. It was the, it was the police who in fact put that label on me. And, and I also wanted to say that hate is a, is a learned behavior. And when, when you grow up in, in certain situations, you realize that you aren't, aren't the most loved one in the room. And, and that's picked up. And, and I just want to say that I am that gang member, quote unquote. And I love each and every one of you. And I, and I have big dreams to, to, to not only change, change laws like these, but to give people like myself a voice. Because I do in fact want change. And I do, I know that I have made decisions and bad choices as a, as a child.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Martine Leva, and there's some, is Denise Hoag here? I'm sorry, if you could put your hands down, Denise Hoag? Thank you. Susan Manson? Susan here? There you are. Rita Jimenez? Is Rita here? Okay. Leslie Mangana? Okay. So Mr. Martine, you have up to eight minutes. Is Mr. Martine here? Okay. All right, then we'll go with, is Andrea Roslinicki here? All right, then we'll go with, is Andrea Roslinicki here? Okay, Gabriela Hernandez? Okay, so you're next, and is Steven Martinez here?
Oh, wait a minute.
I know, I'm asking if you're here. Irene Ridgell? Irene? No. Osil Heragon? Okay. Ari, is she here?
She left.
Okay, so she doesn't, she has to be here to waive her time. Ariana Guerrero, is she here? Okay, Ms. Hernandez, you have up to four minutes.
Okay, great. Well, earlier, everybody was getting credit for all their accomplishments, but a lot of those accomplishments were infrastructure, green projects, there were buildings and streets. Nobody really talked about accomplishments that included people, which is, I think, is the most important element of a community, is the people. So I personally want to acknowledge Kathy Mario, Grant House, Mr. Greg Hart, personally Ampham Poder, for having the courage and the bravery to stand even though it wasn't the most popular, to listen to the community and to speak for the community, like you greatly understand your role as a public servant. So I acknowledge your strength, your bravery. You guys are all just local heroes, so thank you. So looking back since March 2011, what has happened? Well, we know that a gang injunction was filed on March 2011. It was a 46-page document, and it was approved by Mayor Helene Schneider, city council members Dale Francisco, Frank Hotchkiss, Grant House, Randy Rouse, Michael South, and Bendy White. It was one of the largest gang injunctions in the nation, and I'm not sure if you guys understand that. It's one of the largest in the nation. It started with 30 individuals, and since then, the gang injunction has never been placed on the agenda. It has never been, it's only been discussed once in a city council meeting, and that was because we pushed it on. Although the Santa Barbara Police Department, the DA, claimed that the 30 were the baddest of the baddest, they couldn't find enough evidence through their adult criminal record to prove that they were, that they deserved to be on the gang injunction. So Juvenile Court Judge Adams had to actually approve 27 of the 30 individual juvenile records to be opened. Now there's only 12 people left. Three of those are working, three of them also are going to school, and three of those are mothers. It has cost the city over $500,000. That's from June 2009 till June 2012. We don't have actual numbers from 2012 until now because nobody has releases to us, although we have requested it. And this does not include future fees, as we will continue to appeal and fight this. Crime rates have dropped, and this is according to the FBI crime report, 13% decline in absolute numbers despite of substantial population growth. Santa Barbara Police Department has hired at least five new officers, one with a psychology degree. 65% of the general budget has gone to the Santa Barbara Police Department. The ACLU has won a 3.3 ruling over their gang injunction, the Vasas versus Vercaucus. There has been a lawsuit filed in LA for 28 million, and that's the Rodriguez versus City LA, that prohibits curfew laws and other terms and conditions on the gang injunction. The Utah Supreme Court has struck down a gang injunction, saying it was not handled properly by the district attorney. Pro-youth movement was created and has addressed youth violence. A preliminary gang injunction just recently, December 13th, was filed, almost 500 pages, and described Santa Barbara as gang war zone. Solutions have been identified from several different studies that was sponsored by the city and the county. The South Coast Gang Task Force has lost their grant because youth violence decreased. The South Coast Gang Task Force has received $150,000 to address youth violence. And what I see is that city council members are still asking questions, and I think they're still asking, you guys are still asking questions because it's very unclear and it is a very complex process. Like, we understand that it's taken us so much to even understand, and we interview ACLU attorneys, we interview activists in this area. Since then, also, city council member Grant House has changed his position on the gang injunction. Kathy Mario was elected during that time and took a position against the gang injunction.
Thank you, your time's up. I have a question for Ms. Hernandez, go ahead.
Ms. Hernandez, several people have said there's only 12 people left. Does that mean that the remainder of the 30 or 32 are incarcerated?
They're incarcerated or deported.
Or deported.
Yeah, and most of those are serving really long-term sentences.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Philip Brendan.
Somebody yield their time.
Who are you? Did you put, submit a slip already? I don't see your name here, so...
Do you want to add?
No, I've, we, we've been here for, no. So Margarita, you've already submitted a slip?
I should.
What's your name?
Adolfo Vena.
Yes, okay. All right, you have two more minutes.
Okay, thank you. It is also, since 2011, so I'm just giving a brief history, what's happened since 2011 until now. It has been confirmed that the decision was made with no real input. The 300 John Does were dropped. We gathered support from local homeowners and business owners. Greg Hart was, has joined the city council and opposes the gang injunction. So we have to remember that the gang injunction does not guarantee that crime rates will decrease. You guys are taking a really costly risk. You're putting all your money into one solution, thinking it's going to solve the problems. We've seen in other communities that it has not. Grant House went out as a hero of the people. How will you be remembered? What is your legacy?
Philip Brendan will be followed by Patricia Graham. Sorry? What's your name? Patricia Graham? Okay, so you have up to four minutes.
It's a great honor to speak to you, and I appreciate the privilege. My name is Philip Brendan. I grew up here. I come from the Graham-Ortega family. We've always been here, Santa Barbara's, this is what I've always known, I love this city. But now when I come back, like for instance, I drove onto the east side where I grew up this morning, and I see groups of officers in six, driving around in cars with, with three, four, or five officers. It, it's not the same city that I grew up in. And now we have this proposed gang injunction that's completely dividing the city. See, I grew up, and I, and I have the tattoos that would probably put me on an injunction list, and I have the history, and I've made those mistakes, but I've never been arrested as an adult. See, at, at the age of 17, I decided to change my life, and the reason that I decided to change my life is because a probation officer told me, you know what? You're a good kid. I'm going to give you another chance. And instead of, instead of locking me up, which he, he could have, I could have been gone for a while, he decided to give me over to a pastor who mentored me, who taught me self-worth, who, who, who gave me a job and, and taught me how to, to appreciate what I have. You know, I have, I have six children that I'm raising, one of them is academic scholarship at San Diego State, two of them are also pursuing higher learning. I work with kids in the community, I live in Ventura right now, they, they have approached it differently. What we've done with the clergy councils, we've worked with law enforcement, not to collect information, because that's what the community feels like. Anytime the law enforcement approaches us, they feel like all you're trying to do is get information. But they would send kids to us. I would get calls from the officers, from the Ventura County Sheriff or Oxnard PD, saying that we have a kid right here, he's not a bad kid, I want you to work with him before we arrest him. And we've been able to work with their families and prevent a lot of things that were going on. And Oxnard, the gang injunction has not worked. That city is super violent, but the prevention and intervention has worked. We've been able to work with kids, and you know, you could look at the east side right now and the, and the west side and, and write a lot of these people off, and a lot of these kids are gone now because of, because of being involved in things like that. But we're not, we're not people to be written off. I've been working with kids for 12 years. I grew up with people that were, were considered gang members that are now pastors, some called graduates with Gaby Hernandez, working with the community. There's a lot of good people, but we need more people like Nick Cirillo, that probation officer, or Sergio Del Amor, or Richard Ramos, that'll work with the community. Don't incarcerate us, work with us. I'm here to work with the community. I've called Cam Sanchez a number of times and never once received a call back from him. I was eventually just shoveled off to some clergy, clergy member for the police department that had no idea what we were talking about. We're here to work with you for the kids. We don't want to see kids locked up. We want to see kids' lives changed, like me, like Gaby, like so many here, so that we can work with the community and change things. Thank you for your time.
Gregorio Salgado, followed by Chelsea Lancaster. Mr. Salgado? Salgado? No. Chelsea Lancaster? Be followed by Gerardo Gallegos.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. I'm here representing myself as an advisor at Santa Barbara City College in the EOPS Department, the number-one community college in the nation in a gang war zone. Everybody can just let the irony of that really sink in. As my director, Marsha Wright, has so famously said in EOPS, "We have created a department and a place of welcoming and unconditional love." And that, and if you look at our Transitions Program, our Running Start Program, the Spark Program that I run, the things that we do, the evidence is there, that what we do works. What Cam Sanchez and the Santa Barbara Police Department has done is not working, and it will continue to not work. This is a blank check to continue. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again while expecting different results. I, as a community member, I was a young, single parent. I grew up with Gabby Hernandez, so by association, I probably could have ended up on that injunction list because I got into some trouble myself, but I benefited from white privilege, although nobody wants to talk about that. And I was lucky enough, too, to have a family that believed in me and to meet educators that believed in me. They knew I was smart. People are self-fulfilling prophecies. If you are a young Latino male walking around the east side or west side, and you are constantly policed and treated like a criminal, guess what you become? I encourage you to look at the story of Victor Rios, who's a PhD professor out at UCSB. I encourage you to look at the stories that come out of the Transitions Program. I have a student right now who was starting our cosmetology program. He's been a barber, is very interested in doing women's hair, has been in our department twice a week. He's in the parole system, he's been in prison most of his life. He has been so enthusiastic. Santa Barbara Police Department has followed him, harassed him, they took all of his financial aid.
Thank you.
How he's given up, so, good job.
Be followed by Naira Pacheco. I'm sorry, what's your name? Laura?
Dora.
Dora?
Thank you.
Thank you, go ahead. Yep, I have it.
Um, you know, I, I grew up for part of my life, I've lived most of my life in Santa Barbara, but I also grew up in Oakland. And when I go back to Oakland, I was just there over the holidays. When you talk about people saying how lucky we are to live here, that's true, but they also say that we're a laughingstock, because if Santa Barbara is considered a war zone, I encourage you to walk the streets of Oakland. I've never felt unsafe here at night. I would echo some of the sentiments that we do have a criminal justice system that polices people when they commit crimes. Associating, standing, walking, traveling in a car, those are not crimes. We have a probation and parole system that we invest a lot of money in, that follows people when they come out of prison. This is a duplication of services, and it's ridiculous because it doesn't work. We invested money in an armored tank that I love seeing every fiesta, but it's, it's an absolute joke. This is Santa Barbara. You said that we were special. We are special. I said last time I was here, we're better than this. We are better than this. And I think everybody else here in this room knows it. I haven't heard one public comment for support one time that I've been here. And Dale Francisco and Frank Hotchkiss, I think, you know, you guys work for us. I'm a voting citizen, I'm a taxpaying citizen, and for you to be playing Words With Friends and him to be reading a book while we've taken time out of our schedule, we pay you. We're not getting paid to be here, I took off work to be here. It's insulting. It's insulting. I worked really hard in my life to be where I am, and to feel, to live in a community that I invest in and to feel like I have no voice is one of the most disenchanted, frustrating things, and you will never understand it. None of you sitting up there will ever understand how it feels to stand on this side of the podium. I encourage you to take a second look at this, to invest in education because that's what works.
Gerardo Gallegos will be followed by Naira Pacheco. Is Mr. Gallegos here? Naira Pacheco? Leah Gomez? Come on up. And then, Margarita, I did see your, I do have your slip if you'd like to speak after Mr. Gomez. Go right ahead.
First off, it's an honor to be here. I just more or less wanted to say, I was in the system all my life, pretty much, and I, I've changed a lot of things in my life. I got a job. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad, depending on the opportunity that I have to work. What you guys are about to do is you're basically saying that I can't go pick up my child at his school, or, you know, or take him to the park, you know? It's like I, my life as it is is very difficult, you know? I really don't need something like that added to it, especially when I've worked so hard to get out of the system, and now basically you guys bring up this gang injunction that basically what you're doing is you're pulling back in, you know? It's like you want to send me to jail again, and you want to do it for something that I've already paid the price for, you know? And I look at it like, if you're about to do that, really what, how is Santa Barbara so special? You know, what we really need is, we need the opportunity. You got to give me a way out, you know? You got to give me a job. That's what you really got to do. You got to give me a way to be able to do what you do. I want to live in a home, too, just like you. I want to be able to take care of my kids, just like you. Give me that opportunity, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Margarita Batista? And then, is Margarita still here? Paul Corio? Come on up. And then Francisco Lerdo and Laura Ronchiato.
You've all been sworn in to protect this community against foreign or domestic invasion. What type of invasion do you think you're going to be putting and depressing the people with all these? Everything, everybody spoke about is very detrimental to the society. What do you think is going to happen? What's your overall view? I mean, this injunction is taking place all throughout the state in many different cities and towns. I live in Salinas. I came all the way down here just to address this. Nothing good came out of the injunction. All they did was target the people. They targeted the businesses, targeted, they targeted the businesses and the employers. Nobody wants to work in a gang injunction area. Who wants to work in their things? Come on now, I mean, the property owners that are in that targeted area, the value of the property is going to drop, too. How many of you own property in those areas? And better yet, how many of you are going to buy the property from those people that get taken out of the area? Is this your, is this your council investment in society? Because there, you know, you're all in it just for the money, right? There's a lot more to be addressed. I'm the president of the Mexican Community Education and Defense Corporation, and I plan on gathering a lot more education and defense for the people. I didn't eat all the time. I'm going to do it.
Ms. Batista? Francisco, Francisco Lerdo? And then the final speaker will be Laura Ronchiato.
Muy buenas tardes, señoras del Consilio. Antes que nada quiero decirles Año Nuevo y que trabajen todos juntos bien y nos escuchen nuestras peticiones. Yo vengo a decirles lo de las gangas, ¿verdad? Y ustedes quieren pasar esa ley, pero si nosotros no, no queremos, no van a poder hacerlo. Somos muchos.
Good afternoon, city council. I want to start off by wishing you a Happy New Year in hopes that you'll be working together throughout the service of your term. And obviously, I'm here to speak about the gang injunction issue. And I want to let you know that as long as the community doesn't want this gang injunction, we won't let it happen.
Quiero decirles, quiero decirles que por favor nos escuchen lo que estamos hablando, lo que nosotros les estamos pidiendo a ustedes. Pon más escuelas, más universidades. El gobierno da tanto dinero para nuestros jóvenes. Vieran qué orgullo me siento a mí cuando un joven se recibe del colegio. Para mí es un orgullo bien grande. Denles más trabajo. Apoyo en la, en el college. Apoyo. Necesitan mucho apoyo de ustedes. Viene de ustedes, porque ustedes son como unos padres que representa a todo mundo, todo el público. Yo les pido de corazón que los ayuden, por favor.
I want to ask that you listen to what we're asking, to what we're petitioning you for, that you support our youth, that you invest in our youth, that you make our youth and our community believe that you want them to be in college. There's so many resources that we can continue to place into our youth to make them believe that that's somewhere they can be. And you need to act as parents of the city, of our community, to make sure this happens.
Y también quiero decirles, por favor, que nos escuchen, que tengan ese corazón blandito. Yo voy ahora por ustedes para que Dios les dé ese corazón tan lindo que tienen. Gracias a todos.
Finally, I want to ask that you use that beautiful heart of yours to act with compassion, to act with sensibility, and I will pray for you and I'll pray that you make the right decision. Thank you. And, Your Honor, I know I was missing one. My name was called, but I would like to speak.
What's your name?
Naira Pacheco.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
And then Laura Roncieto will be the final speaker.
Perfect. And I also had time yielded to me by, your name? Angela.
I have everyone's name down here, and I don't have your name, Angela.
We have the slip right here.
No, it's, you have two minutes.
First of all, I want to start off by saying, just to make, get that out of the way, that the ACLU and the Democratic Central Committee have both sent out letters in opposition of the, both preliminary and gang injunction at large. The ACLU, Southern California Filia and Santa Barbara Chapter commits all of its legal resources to make sure that this gang injunction does not go into effect. And I hope you know that that entails going to as many superior and federal courts as necessary to make sure that that happens. I didn't want to rush through this, and I really was not hoping to come back to City Council to talk to you about the gang injunction yet again. But since it was filed in 2011, I've attended several community events. Only one of them really put on by you through public comment in May of 2011, in which everyone spoke in opposition of the issue. Not one person said, "I support this gang injunction." And after holding such a hearing, it seemed, you know, like there would be a shift in the kind of decision-making that the city would make towards the issue. And I understand that this was filed with intentions to create a safer community, and as officials of the city, we entrust you to make the most responsible and positive solutions for our community, but we also expect for you to listen to us when we say no. This is not the right solution for Santa Barbara, and we deserve better, we can do better. We don't feel that our city is in great danger, and we don't feel that a gang injunction is the appropriate million-dollar solution that this community needs. I'm thankful for those of you who are currently serving, that have taken the time to listen and participate and put yourself in a place of learning in order to create the right solutions for this community. And as somebody who has been involved in this, we've also taken time for learning. I want you to take the time to read a lot of our shirts when they say, "Our people are all the same. It's a gang injunction that divides us." We're not just talking about those who live in the injunction areas. We're talking about all of us in this city, you included.
Thank you.
It's a gang injunction that will divide us into creating the right solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Roncieto. Laura here. She'll be the final speaker.
My name is Laura Roncieto. I'm going to keep this brief. I am a board member of the ACLU, member of the Legal Committee of the ACLU, and I'm also the ombuds person at the Santa Barbara County Jail. That entails speaking to inmates about concerns of their confinement. I'm not here representing any of the organizations or community work that I do. I'm here to represent myself for selfish reasons. I am of Latin American. I'm an immigrant. I was born in Argentina. I have two young boys of Latin American descent, and I fear that they will be racially profiled as they grow up in Santa Barbara. I do not want them to be attacked by the police, to be harassed, to be profiled. I feel that the people here in front of me don't represent me. I speak Spanish at home. I have small children. I am young, and I'm not a white male, so a lot of you, I don't know why you guys are making decisions that affect all of us, our community, because there's a lot of this community that's not represented up here. So I just want you to take into consideration that for some reason you're up here, and it's not because it's probably what most of the community wants. That's just the way it is. So I'll end with that. Thanks.
That concludes public comment, and I would appreciate, as you leave the room, we still have a council meeting, so if you could do so quietly and keep your conversations outside the chambers. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent calendar. We have some items to read.
Item number 12, 2014 Waterfront Refunding Revenue Bonds. That council adopt by reading of title only in ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, authorizing the execution and delivery by the city of an installment sale agreement and a letter agreement for purchase and approving the execution of a trust agreement by the authority in connection with the execution and delivery of Santa Barbara Financing Authority Waterfront Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2014 and authorizing related actions.
Hold on just a second. If you could please keep your comments outside, we're trying to continue our council meeting. Thank you. Did you have another item? Did you read both of them? Hold on just, if you could please take your conversations outside the chambers. Thank you very much. Go ahead, thank you.
Item number 13, Records Destruction for Finance Department. That council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Finance Department and the Administration, Accounting, Environmental Programs, General Services, Risk Management, and Treasury Divisions.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. We do have a brief public comment for number 14. If you could read number 14.
Donation to Police K-9 Unit Trust Fund for purchase of new K-9 and related expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Case. Yeah, right.
I lost my audience. I promise I won't take the full two and a half hours allotted to me. On behalf of the Santa Barbara Police Foundation, it's my honor to be here today once again, although the first time this year, to make a presentation of a check for $45,000 to support the K-9 program for the city. We have two board members with us today, Mike McGrew and Greg Hans from the Police Department, and they are among the many hardworking board members that I'm privileged to work with. We had a great, fantastic event a few months ago where we raised tons of money, and with this check, the total amount that we've provided the city is $250,000 in the last two years. So we're pleased to be able to do that and support the men and women who serve and protect us. So I would urge your consent to accept this.
Thank you. I'll take it and give it directly to the city administrator.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations to Frank and Bendy and Greg and Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
All righty.
Okay, does anyone need to take an item off the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve it? Moved in, is there a second? Moved in second at all in favor? Aye? Okay, item number 17. And thank you, staff, for your patience. If you could read item number 17.
Annual Water Supply Management Report.
Thank you. Ms. Bjork or whomever is starting this, oh, Mr. Hagmark, go ahead.
If you put your mic on, that would be great. Thank you. Start over again. Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Joshua Hagmark. I'm the Acting Water Resources Manager, and I'm here today to present to you the Water Supply Management Report for 2013 Water Year. As part of this report and given our current situations with water supply, we decided to take a little deviation in this report and spend some time talking about a lot more than what we typically do on an annual basis with this water supply report. I have with me today Kelly Dyer. She is our Water Supply Specialist, and she will be presenting as well. So the purpose of this report has roots with the, with our, the state water that we get. This is part of our agreement to take state waters, that we do this annual report. And so at the end of this report, we'll be looking for you to make the findings, support of the findings, that this is in balance with our long-term groundwater plan. So as part of today's report, we'll be looking and going into more detail about all of the city's water supplies, kind of doing a little history about where all of our water comes from and the current condition of those water supplies. And we'll also be discussing current water demands and where we stand with that. And we'll be reviewing the city's water shortage supply plan and drought planning that we have on, and there's no questions. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Dyer to take over.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to just introduce our water supply mix. We're very fortunate here at the city to have a very diverse mix of water resources. We have water from the Santinaz River, which we receive through Gibraltar and Kachuma. We have local groundwater. We have recycled water. We have imported water from the state water project, which we also have stored in groundwater banking programs. And conservation is also what we consider to be a very large component of our water supply mix. And we have ongoing conservation programs, as well as, in drought conditions, extraordinary conservation measures. So what we're looking at here is an example of our supply mix under different hydrologic conditions. And on the left is our actual water use in the water year 2013. This is actually a sort of a backward-looking water supply management report because the water year ended in September of 2013. We're out now in the 2014 water year. So last year, our supplies were primarily from Lake Kachuma. That was our, it's our largest source of supply. We had some groundwater use and a little bit of recycled water use. We would normally have more recycled water use, but our tertiary plant is currently not reliably producing recycled water, and I'll talk more about that later. On the right-hand side, you can see that this is an example drought here, and our supply mix changes, we manage our supplies quite differently. In drought situations, we would use more groundwater, more imported water from the state water project. And something that's not on here, I should point out, is that we also have an ocean desalination facility as a backup supply for extraordinary conditions. What I'm going to do is walk through each of these sources of supplies to talk about the current issues and sort of give an overview of each of them. So Lake Kachuma is our primary source of water. We have an annual entitlement of 8277 acre-feet per year. If you're not familiar with that acronym, an acre-feet or an acre-foot is roughly equivalent to the size of, almost the size of a football field with one foot of water. And in Santa Barbara, that's on average enough water to supply three single-family households a year is one acre-foot of water. With Kachuma, we are fortunate that it is a multi-year supply, and we have the ability to carry over water. If we don't use our entitlement in one year, we can carry it over to the next year. And this is really where water conservation is very important to us because we're able to stretch our supplies and really build up that carryover water in storage. Kachuma is currently 42% full, and that's relatively low compared to recent years. If it continues to be dry through the winter, if we don't receive substantial rains, then it's projected that when Kachuma reaches 25% to 30% full approximately, a pump system would be required in order to receive the water. At that, there is a point where the lake levels will drop below our, the elevation of our intake structure, and we'd have to pump the water into the South Coast Conduit. So we're monitoring that closely. A couple of major issues going on with Lake Kachuma. The State Water Resources Control Board is in charge of water rights, and they are currently modifying our water rights order. We are awaiting the draft. We expect it to come out sometime this month or next month. And then fish management has been an ongoing program for decades. In the year 2000, there was a biological opinion that was done for the Kachuma project, and that outlined environmental requirements that we follow. And the National Marine Fisheries Service and the Bureau of Reclamation have initiated a reconsultation process on the endangered steelhead trout. And so we've been working with CCRB to provide information to support the reconsultation process. Something that will come out of that process will be a new biological assessment on the steelhead trout and a revised biological opinion. Gibraltar Reservoir along the Santinaz River, the city has substantial water rights. It's a pre-1914 water right. However, the ongoing siltation over the years has reduced the yield from Gibraltar. The current yield is, on average, about 3,900 acre-feet per year. Gibraltar Reservoir is currently very low due to a few years of very dry conditions. It's currently 7% full, and we are not using that source currently due to water quality, which would require costly treatment. The 1989 pass-through agreement is something we are currently working to implement. This is an existing agreement that was, that was signed. At the time, the city had plans to enlarge Gibraltar Dam in order to restore the capacity in Gibraltar that was lost to siltation. And there was opposition to that project at the time, and so the pass-through agreement was a regional compromise signed by regional entities, and it allows the city to, so the city deferred enlargement of the dam in exchange for the ability to store water that would otherwise have been stored in Gibraltar in Kachuma Reservoir. And it helps to stabilize the yield we would receive from Gibraltar. In order to create a storage account in Kachuma, the city has to obtain a Warren Act contract with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, and so that is currently what we're working on. Obtaining a Warren Act contract does have to go through environmental review, and the Bureau of Reclamation is, will be issuing a draft environmental assessment on that.
Excuse me, what makes a Warren Act special is the, doesn't need the EIR? Is that what it is?
Any water that is not of the Kachuma Project that is stored in Lake Kachuma has to, it's just a standard contract that the Bureau of Reclamation issues. We have a Warren Act contract for our imported supplies when it's delivered to Lake Kachuma. It's a, it's a pretty standard contract for any supplies not related to the Kachuma Project itself.
And the timeline on this is a few months, you think?
Well, it's in the Bureau of Reclamation's hands right now.
Who knows?
We think they're very close to releasing the environmental assessment.
Thank you.
Submission Tunnel is our method of conveying water from Gibraltar Reservoir. It's a 3.7-mile-long tunnel. Starts at Gibraltar Reservoir, and it runs through the mountains and ends near Caterwater Treatment Plant. The tunnel itself is actually a source of supply due to groundwater infiltration that occurs along the tunnel. On average, we see a yield of about 1,100 acre-feet per year. State water, the city, this is another source of supply for the city. The city's Table A allocation for state water is 3,300 acre-feet. The Table A refers to a table within the contract itself, and it is the maximum amount of water that would be allocated to the city in any given year. This year, the Department of Water Resources has, has an initial allocation statewide of 5% of Table A allocations. And this is an issue for many communities across the state because it's only the second time in history that it's been that low. For the city, we're very fortunate because we have carryover storage, that we have our Table A allocation that wasn't used in previous years, that is available. our Table A allocation that wasn't used in previous years, that is available to us this year. And so that is, that will help us to meet our demands going forward with continued dry conditions. When we receive our imported water, it comes in at Lake Kachuma. And per the 2000 biological opinion that was done for the Kachuma project, there are some environmental requirements that can potentially limit the deliveries of imported water periodically. So we are, we have submitted our delivery request for this year, but we will have to coordinate with other agencies in case the environmental requirements cause any limitations. The Delta issues remain, the highly publicized issue, the Delta is where our imported water The Bay Delta Conservation Plan was recently released for public review along with the environmental documentation. And it's a plan that focuses on co-equal goals for water supply and habitat. Because we're connected to the state water project, it actually does open up new opportunities for water supplies to us. It provides connectivity to the rest of the state. And the city currently has 1,600 acre-feet of water in our groundwater, in stored groundwater banking programs. In addition, this year, there's a 2014 Dry Year Water Transfer Program that the city is pursuing in cooperation with the other state water contractors.
Mr. Francisco, go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Dyer, how much water is in carryover storage, state water and carryover storage in Kachuma?
It's, it's currently stored in San Luis reservoir. There's about 2,600 acre-feet.
Thank you.
Groundwater is a very important resource for the city. It's truly our only local operational supply. If there was a catastrophic interruption in supply from the tunnels, this would be our main source. So we, it's a very valuable resource for us. And we typically only pump the baseload supply in normal years, which is the amount of naturally occurring recharge to the basin. But there is water stored in the basin that we would rely on in drought and emergency conditions. And we are currently working with USGS on a updated modeling study to better understand the management of our basins, how much we can pump without causing overdraft and seawater intrusion. So we have, this is a...
Excuse me, if I may, could you talk a little bit more about our groundwater? Do we know what the capacity is? Do we know where we stand now? How saltwater intrusion? Could you just talk a little bit about that?
I will, and those are on my next slides. I just wanted to point out, on this diagram here shows our, the location of our groundwater basins. So we have active wells in the Foothill Basin, as well as Storage Unit 1, which is also known as the Downtown Basin. So in the Foothill Basin, the estimated perennial yield is 905 acre-feet per year. This is the amount of naturally occurring recharge that goes to the basin.
Mr. Hart has a question.
Sure.
Do we share the Foothill Basin with the Gleeda Water District?
No, we don't. They used to have a well there, but then, as part of an overlap exchange agreement, they no longer use it.
Okay, thank you.
But there are, there are actually several other pumpers in the basin. La Cumbre Water District is probably the largest other pumper from the basin. And so accounting for pumping by others, the assumed safe yield available to the city is about 450 acre-feet per year, about half of the perennial yield.
Is there an agreement with the other pumpers to, as to what everybody gets to use?
La Cumbre is limited to 300 acre-feet per year, and the remainder, it's just based on estimates from USGS.
Thank you.
The multi-year drought yield, this is based on previous USGS modeling studies. It's estimated to be about 5,000 acre-feet for the city total. This was over a five-year period, the total extractions. And for the Foothill Basin, the water levels, they have been declining in recent years, which we've been monitoring, but they are still above the historical range. They're not as low as they have been historically. So we, we do plan to use this basin with continued dry conditions.
Mr. White?
Thank you. I'll be asking, we're coming more on the Foothill Basin later, but I am interested in what kind of extraction we've gotten out of it in the last, let's say, three years.
The last three years, I believe, were, two out of three were slightly above our safe yields from the basin, and that was because we were, we were meeting water quality requirements. There were some TOC issues, and the groundwater was mixed with our cater water in order to meet regulations. Now that the ozone plant is online, that's no longer an issue.
Right, so that, you're saying that we've been extracting approximately 450 acre-feet per year the last, say, three years or two?
The last three years, it's probably ranged up to 700 acre-feet in a couple of the years.
Great, okay, thank you.
So Storage Unit 1, that's in the downtown, downtown area. The estimated perennial yield is 800 acre-feet per year. The city is the only known pumper from this basin. And the multi-year drought yield estimated by USGS is about, it ranges from seven to, 7,000 to 13,000 acre-feet. And that depends on which wells we're pumping from and the level of seawater intrusion. Because that basin is closer to the ocean, it is subject to seawater intrusion. The water levels in the downtown basin are currently very high. We haven't been using that basin. And some of the wells in that basin require treatment for naturally occurring iron, manganese, and sulfide. And so the Ortega Treatment Plant was recently completed in November 2013 to treat for those constituents. This will be an important resource for us with continued dried conditions as well. Recycled water is a, is a very valuable resource because it helps to preserve our potable supplies. The recycled, the current demand along the recycled water system is approximately 800 acre-feet per year. And our long-term plans call for an additional 300 acre-feet of demand connected to the system. Unfortunately, recently, our, our treatment plant has not been reliably producing recycled water, and so it is going, undergoing some, plant upgrades, which are scheduled to begin this April and are expected to be complete by the summer of 2015. In the meantime, during construction, the system will be supplied with potable water, and there won't be interruption to supply.
Go ahead, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the map, it's showing the high school and junior high as being hooked up to the reclaimed water system? Is that, that's, that's a plan, not in case, or is it, is that in place at this point?
These are all the existing customers, so they are connected.
Thank you.
Were the connections to the school district proposed by the school district, or did we offer to pipe and bring the water to them?
Ms. Jordan? We have musical chairs here, there you go. Usually there's, there we go.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, when the recycled water system was built in 1989 and 1991, the, the city determined the route based on cost-effectiveness. So we looked at the usage of the sites and then mapped out throughout the city what was the most effective as far as laying the pipe and then where the most demand would be, and that's how it was determined.
Is there capacity to extend it in certain areas, like to other school district facilities, other fields?
Yes, as part of the Long-Term Water Supply Plan, we did an assessment of that, and we have certain branches that we've looked at, and we've put them into phases based on cost. So our first phase was to look at any sites that are along the current distribution system, and then going down from there, obviously, as costs increase. We determined that because of the current situation with the filters and now potable water being served, that we wouldn't pursue additional sites until the treatment issues are resolved.
Right, thank you.
So water conservation is very important to us. When our customers save water, it helps to offset costly, development of costly new supplies. And this is, this is some examples of what's in our ongoing water conservation program. I wanted to differentiate, this is different than extraordinary measures, which we'll be talking about later in the drought planning section of the presentation. But our ongoing conservation programs include Smart Landscape Rebate Program, Free Water Checkups, which include an evaluation of both indoor and outdoor water use, online irrigation scheduling tools to help with the timing and the amount of irrigation, Waterwise Survey and Incentive Program, which provides assistance for businesses. And there's a ton of information on our comprehensive website, santabarbara.ca.gov/waterwise, and we encourage all of our water customers to go there and, and look at the opportunities that are available to them. Ocean Desal, we do have an ocean desal plant that was built in 1991 in response to the drought. It has an ultimate capacity of 10,000 acre-feet per year. At the time, the treatment capacity was built to 7,500 acre-feet per year, but it has had a potential for expansion.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, what's the permit? I see the time of two years. What's the permitting path there? And is that, are we fully permitted at this point? Can we do tenant improvement, so to speak, to rehab it? Or do we have to go back and get a coastal development permit to get that plant back up and running?
At this time, we have, we believe we're currently permitted, but there are, we would have to reevaluate that at the, at the time of final design and construction. So the, we're currently permitted for 3,100, approximately 3,100 acre-feet per year. The city has been maintaining those permits over the years, even though we haven't, the plant hasn't been operational. The plant has been in long-term storage mode because it was very expensive to operate and would still be our most expensive resource to operate if it was brought back online. In order to, if we were to make the plant operational, we would have to do rehabilitation. And in 2009, a study was done that estimated the rehab costs at $18 million, that's a capital cost, that's in $2,000. And then the estimated timeframe would be two years for final design and construction.
Mr. Hart and Mr. Hotchkiss both have questions.
Well, just following up on Councilmember White's questions about the permitting status. So I think we believe that our permit is current with the Coastal Commission to operate the plant, but I guess that hasn't been tested, there hasn't been any dialogue with the Coastal Commission to find out. Because the reason I ask is that they're, they definitely have taken a different path with permitting municipal desal plants in terms of the technology that they're approving. Now they're looking at sand filtration, and our system doesn't have sand filtration, I understand. So has, has that discussion been going on with the Coastal Commission? Would they require us to do a different method of capturing the water to eliminate entramin and trappen issues with marine life?
We have not initiated discussions at this point because our, our desal plant has been a backup supply. When we get to the point of making a decision to move forward with bringing it back online, that we would have those conversations.
Okay, so the $18 million estimated cost wouldn't involve any kind of change in the outfall pipe? Yeah, it's just the trailers and the membranes?
Minor, minor changes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What is our total requirement in a normal year in the city? Acre-feet?
For demand? In a normal year, it's roughly 14,000 acre-feet.
Okay, thank you, that's what I thought, thank you.
So the desal plant is important, and it's an important resource because of the role it plays in extended drought and emergency conditions. And it was, in our adopted Long-Term Water Supply Plan, that was, which provides guidance on water supply planning, that is the role it serves. So let's take a look at demand variations. This black line shows our historical water demands. And so you can see, this was actually the 1989 drought period when there was a significant dip in water demands. We were fortunate to have the customers' response to reduce water demands. Since that time, our demands started to increase slowly, but then they've, they've sort of leveled off. They've never gone back to the levels they were prior to the 1989 drought. And that is, that's because of the conservation and the consciousness of our community to conserve water, even with some growth.
Mr. As.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At what point does that water demand curve drop down to the point where the agency no longer generates the revenue necessary to keep it afloat? I'd like to irritate Rebecca Bork with that question every year.
Well, we would have to, we'll be talking about this later in the presentation, but part of going into a drought period will include an evaluation of our water rates. We may have to adjust water rates to account for the cost of service with reduced demands.
I was thinking back to that period when citizens responded very, very well, and to the point where we had that issue. So I'm assuming we're anticipating that as well.
We'll be evaluating that, yep. So this is, the line with the X's on it is our long-term projections, our planned demands. And I wanted to point out, this is kind of hard, hard to see, but there is variations from year to year, and it's correlated with weather. And so this blue across the bottom is our total annual rainfall on a running basis. And this is 2008, which was a very wet year, it was El Nino year. And here you can see there was a dip in our, in our water demands. In more recent years, we've had pretty dry conditions for the last couple of years, and we've started to see our demands increase. And this isn't, this is to be expected when conditions are hot and dry, outdoor water demands increase.
Excuse me, if I may, I think you mean 1998 was when the El Nino was, am I correct?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay, I just didn't want people to think, oh, we just had a rainy year.
Thank you. This is another look at our, our demands on a per capita basis. The, there's a statewide goal to reduce water use 20% by 2020, and the metric used for that goal is gallons per capita, water use in gallons per capita per day. And so the purple line is our monthly per capita use, and you can see the variations. Seasonally, it, demands are higher in the summer and lower in the winter. And then the blue line is the running average annual water use in gallons per capita per day. The red line are our goals for, to meet the 20 by 20 requirements. And so there has been, this reflects what I was showing on the previous chart, there's been an increase in demands, which we believe is because of the, the dry weather that we've been experiencing. been experiencing. We are still confident that we'll meet our 20 by 20 goals in the future. So our current weather conditions, the year-to-date rainfall as of the start of the water year, October 1st, we have, the city monitors rain at two gauges, one is at Gibraltar. This affects our water supplies. And the other one is in downtown Santa Barbara, which is an indicator for our demands. So at Gibraltar, we've had 1.29 inches of rainfall. This is 53% below average. And we've had no significant inflows to Gibraltar or Kachuma. In Santa Barbara, the rainfall's been one inch, which is 62% below average, and we are seeing that our demands are higher than average. These are the official projections from NOAA, the three-month look ahead for rainfall. And they are showing a high probability that it's going to be drier than average. And so we have been planning for continued dry, dry conditions. And in 2011, the city adopted a long-term water supply plan, which provides a foundation and guidance on our supply planning. And it outlined a six-year dry weather planning period. And we adapt that six-year planning period to current conditions. And so this chart is reflecting our current plan for a six-year dry weather period. I'll explain the bars here. So we have Lake Kachuma entitlement is the dark blue bar. The medium blue is our carryover storage in Kachuma. The lighter blue is Gibraltar. The green is imported water. Yellow is groundwater. And then the orange would be our groundwater banking or water purchases. Purple is recycled water. And as I mentioned before, the plant is, is going to be offline for construction. So we see it coming back online in year five. We are currently in year three of this six-year dry weather period. And so one of the, there's a couple of things that are different in our management of the supplies from last year. One is this green bar, we're, we're planning to use more imported water if conditions continue to be dry this winter. And the other is our Kachuma entitlement. We are planning to only use 80% of our Kachuma entitlement and carry over the remainder for next year.
Can you explain to me about Gibraltar capacity there, since you said earlier we were not drawing water from Gibraltar, and yet the graph shows that we're going to use Gibraltar water?
That's a good point. Some of, some of that supply is Mission Tunnel, that's shown here. But it brings up the point that this is our current plan, and it's, we don't really know what's going to happen with hydrology in a few years down the road. And the drought could last longer than six years. And so we are continually looking at this and refining it in order to adaptively manage our supplies. If we don't see the amount of inflow to Gibraltar that we had planned, we'll have to make adjustments to this.
So, so year, we're in year three. So the light blue or the grayish Gibraltar Mission Tunnel line, that's actual that we used in years one and two, or?
So years one and two were actuals.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to turn it over to Joshua. He's going to, because we are looking ahead and planning for continued dry conditions. So Joshua's going to be talking about our drought planning, which really, you can see in year four is when we would start to have planned demand reductions to stretch our, our water supplies.
All right. So, yeah, so two minutes into this acting position and coming up to speed quickly on all the different plans going forward, but I have to, have to tell you, this city staff has been thinking about the, the drought plan since it stopped raining and the reservoirs were full. As soon as that was done, they started thinking about the next drought. So this is not something that's new. This is not something that we just woke up January 1st and thought, oh my gosh, it's awfully dry out there. And there is an active adopted plan in 2011 that lays out exactly how we approach dry weather. And, and this year, being the third below-average rainfall year, basically things start to ramp up. And so what we're, what we'll be referring back to, that, that water shortage contingency plan as we, sorry, as we move forward, we'll be asking, you know, at the most, looking ahead, 15% reduction from the community as we move forward. The, the community has been successful in holding water usage below the 1988 levels. I mean, we were at 16,000 acre feet a year, and we currently are in the 14,000 acre feet per year. So we've been able to shave off 2,000 acre feet just in conservation measures in the public. And, you know, that's, that reflects, I think positively, on how serious this community takes and how serious this council has taken this issue. And you notice that we, we typically don't use the word drought. We try to save that for when it's truly a drought condition, and I think we are approaching that. Typically, we, we talk about below-average rainfall, but we are approaching the conditions of a drought. And we want to use that word when it's appropriate so that we get the appropriate response we need from the public when it's really important, because we do live in an arid climate. And we go through cycles of dry periods, and that's completely normal, we expect that. But then they get to a period where we might be approaching here in March, where we might be coming to council to discuss actually entering a drought, officially entering a drought. And so there are three stages to the drought, as, as we like to communicate, we like to communicate with the public. The stage one is a voluntary reduction. And depending on the success of this voluntary reduction is when we enter the stage two. But we'll be ramping up public outreach, we'll be letting them know what tools are available to help them better understand how they use their water. And then we'll also be discussing whether we go out for an RFP to start a performance specification for this D-Sal facility. And I think we'll be investigating the permitting issues and, and bringing that to light. Then we have what's called a stage-two drought, and that's where we will be asking the public for mandatory reductions in water use. And we'll also be looking at adjusting the rate structure to help encourage people to, to use less water. And we'll be also looking at the groundwater well permits, which the city now issues, and looking at deferring any new permits in the interim. And then, of course, there's stage three, which is mandatory, and we'll have restrictions on outdoor water usage. And again, we'll be looking at water rates, whether they're appropriate at the time to encourage conservation. And at that time, we'll be consistently, you know, strongly considering awarding a construction contract to get underway with putting the D-Sal facility possibly back into operation. So when would we do all this? This is a tentative, this is based on continued below-average rainfall. We anticipate that as early as March, we would be coming to council to discuss passing a resolution to enter a stage, declare a stage-one drought. And depending on the success of the public's response to that, we assumed that nobody responds, then we could be entering a stage-two drought in October. And following, you know, next year being, again, below-average rainfall, we could be entering a stage-three drought in March of 2015.
Excuse me, could we go back to that last slide for a second? Explain the two lines.
Basically, the, the green line is our current, you know, average annual water usage, and the blue line would be the conservation that we would hope to see from the public once we started to initiate.
Thank you.
Sorry, in acre feet per year, sorry, per month, sorry.
I just wanted to add that, at the March timeframe, we'll have a pretty good sense of our water supplies. It's towards the end of the rainy season. And it's also the point at which our demands typically start to increase due to the summer outdoor irrigation.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, I think, for the public that, you know, about 50% of the water we use in this community is outside of the home. And so there is a, a huge resource to manage there, I think, to, to really, to, for conservation. And I think we learned a lot going through the last drought on where we can really focus that, that energy of conservation. So looking ahead to 2014, we have adequate supplies to get us through 2014. Like, as I mentioned, the dry winter will trigger possible stage-one drought in March if we don't see any room for more rainfall. Drought responses will involve both supply and demand management, so there'd be, it's both sides. And customer water use, as has been mentioned, is currently higher than projected due to the low rainfall. And we're asking customers to revisit their outdoor water use. The city has a, you know, a free program that they can call and have people come out and help them look at their water use in their home and outside and, and get some help with how best to maybe reduce their, their water usage without maybe too much compromise at this point. You know, it goes a long ways at this point. So in conclusion, we are looking to council to, for an action of finding that the report meets the long-term groundwater balance in compliance with the state water project conditions and adoption of the 2000 water supply management report.
Thank you, I don't see any public speaker slips. Okay, Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Egmark, so we, as we project our needs, our uses coming forward based on traditional usage, and the, the current census is keep this, the population relatively stable, but what we have is some really big developments in terms of hotels and those kinds of projects. Are those demands all built into those numbers as we look forward?
You know, you know, what's interesting is looking back is, is since the, our peak water use in 1988 of 16,000 acre feet, we've added, put to the population about 5% increase in population, and we're still 2,000 acre feet below that usage. So I would expect that we would continue to see more conservation efforts. I know we were excited to see the recent passing of, you know, the low-flow devices, I know, which we've already encouraged here, but statewide use of it. So those projections, I don't know that it includes any huge increase in population growth.
Right, I was thinking more along the commercial lines, only because when we change even from the Fiesta Parade from Thursday to Friday, based on those water use fears. And thinking back to those times and how we, we almost kind of targeted that industry, I'm thinking, well, here we have now probably the most dramatic increase in the number of keys being built that we've had, you know, in memory. So just, just curious, because I don't really know how that works. I know they tend to be very conscious and have programs for conservations within their physical plants.
Yeah.
But I would just, you know, given the rooms that are on the, on the planning table at the moment, I just, I'm assuming you guys have gone through with those, with those kinds of use projections and where we're going to go with that.
Yeah, I'll have Ms. Jordan take a stab at that one.
Yes, Mayor Shiner, Councilmember Rouse. As part of the long-term water supply plan, you may recall that we projected out the 20 years of water use. And so we have, each year that we projected our demand, we actually have, the demand is declining. And in that assessment of all each year's where the demand's going to be, we have included our projections of new demand based on the general plan. So we worked with the community development department to specifically assess each of those years. It starts from 2010 and goes to 2030. And we look at that and we have it tracked by each year, what the new demand in commercial, in single-family, in multifamily, as well as then with the plumbing code, what the reductions in demand will be. And then adding in our planned long-term waters conservation program, what the reduction in demand will be. So there's the increase in demand with the new development, but then the offset of somewhat of offset. And then as well as the reduction, sorry, the offset with the new plumbing code, but then the reduction in demand by our conservation program, overall, our demand declining and not increasing.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have questions about Gibraltar. I read a couple of things, is the pass-through agreement done? I thought it was done, but then I read something that sounded like it was still under negotiation.
The pass-through agreement itself is an existing agreement that was signed in 1989. The pass-through mode of the agreement is what we're currently working to implement, which requires the Warren Act contract with the Bureau of Reclamation.
Right, it's because the water supply is going to be kept in Kachuma. Okay, what's the, when you talk about management, sedimentation management options, I saw that in the report, what, can, can the sedimentation be removed? Is that a naive question? It just, it just seems like it's a source of water for us if we could fix it.
Right, that's a, it is part of our, in our long-term water supply plan, one of our policies was to evaluate sediment management options as well as watershed management to mitigate against the risk of wildfire, which causes greater sediment loads into the reservoirs. It's very, in terms of sediment removal, that's a very expensive option to, it's very expensive to dredge from the reservoir. And there's also environmental issues that would have to be addressed. So in the long term, that is something we, we can evaluate.
Did the pass-through agreement now, we cannot expand? Because, I mean, that's how it was presented, that...
The pass-through agreement will help us to stabilize the Gibraltar yield back to what it was in 1988 at the time. And so it, it is a great mechanism to stabilize our yield from Gibraltar. We'd still be able to restore that source of supply, the use of it.
I understand how you're trying, you know, that's kind of dealing, right, and storage. But are we now precluded from actual construction? What would you do, add, when you, when I saw a reference to expansion? So that meant adding flashboards to it or something like that to capture more water?
The, the city doesn't currently have plans to enlarge Gibraltar Dam. So this, the pass-through agreement is something, it doesn't change the operations at all, it's not changing the inflows to Kachuma or the operations of Gibraltar. It's that because of celtation that's occurred in the reservoir, it will spill more frequently. And so it's the ability to account for those, that extra spilled water in a storage account in Kachuma. So we're not changing the inflows to Kachuma, it's just the ability to utilize that water that would otherwise have been stored in Gibraltar.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, I think maybe answer your question on this is, if the city were to do any enlargement of Gibraltar, it would nullify the pass-through agreement? And so, we could, I guess, but it would nullify that, that agreement.
Okay, and then my second question would be about the Mission Tunnel, that we use it as a water source, but I know there's an issue that the water would have flowed through the creek, and in the summer dry months, it would have helped the steelhead trout who get trapped in the pools. And there was a plan historically, or a, a practice, which was kind of under the radar screen, sort of, right, where Fish and Game, formerly Fish and Game, now State Fish and Wildlife would release some water. So I just, I know I've asked this question before, and I would, you know, be happy to follow up another time about the, the equity of some of that water, you know, being used for habitat reasons.
Yeah, there is some challenges to that. I'm coming up to speed on all the, the history with this, but I am aware that the, the challenge is you're be introducing species from the tunnel, which actually has some carp, has a lot of crawfish in there, has freshwater clams, all these things that don't exist in Mission Creek. And so Fish and Wildlife had issues when we discussed this with them, had issues with how they would, because we weren't interested in managing that aspect of how do you keep that, that out of the creek? Because all of those would go after the steelhead fry, and so that's, that's a potential issue.
Except that they, that the practice had been happening without that being an issue. And there is a way to manage with screening or something like that. So I just, I just know that there's conversations going on... So I just, I just know that there's conversations going on with these regulatory agencies and I, I'll follow up on it in the, in this new year. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Is there risk going forward? Do you have state water being used in years four, I guess, four, five, and six? Is this drought different statewide? As I read in the, in the LA Times and stuff, that the state snowpack is ridiculously low, like 15% of normal. Is there a scenario where we're going to rely on state water and there just isn't going to be any state water? And what, what do you do to work around that?
Well, thank you. That's a good question. And I think that's why we kind of wanted to start our presentation by talking about how diverse our portfolio is. We, we certainly, it is a component of our portfolio, but it isn't certain, certainly something we put all of our eggs in that basket. We understand that there's a lot of different users that are going to be pulling from it. And, and so I think it's going to take, there's going to be a lot of creative thought going on, going forward about different options. I mean, there's, you know, North County has a lot of groundwater that, you know, there's a potential using the South Coast or using the state water pipeline to, to exchange water in that way. The state water is an interesting, provides an interesting opportunity to exchange water with agencies that you normally have no connection with. And so in doing so, you know, there, there are opportunities with carpandoria and there, they have a pretty plentiful aquifer. And so there's opportunities for us to exchange water via the, the South Coast conduit in that ways. So I think it just opens up the opportunities to discuss and have different ways of exchanging water. But that's certainly a plausible, you know, outcome, is that the state water is crunched as well for delivery.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we have any feel for how drastically the new plumbing requirements are going to affect us?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I'm assuming you're referring to the new state law that requires the, when there is a substantial type of building permit, that the, any non-low-flow device in the home be upgraded?
Yes, but in, I think in three or four years, it's supposed to be sort of universal, isn't it?
It is, yes, phased in, but it's for homes and some multifamily developments that were built before 1994. And because of our very successful and aggressive water conservation program over 25 years, we have saturated the low-flow devices. We have done an assessment that we have statistically reviewed and looked at, that we have, you know, almost in the range of 80% to 90% saturation of low-flow devices in our community. So it's not a substantial amount that we have in Santa Barbara. Other communities are different in the state, but we think we're very saturated with low-flow devices. So I don't think there's going to be a lot of impact for us, but certainly the low-hanging fruit there, the old pink toilet in the guest bathroom, those are going to be gone and that's going to be a good thing.
Oh, no. What, what's the, what's the new requirement? 1.2 gallons per flush or something? I can't remember what it is.
Well, it's a little bit confusing because there is, there's two requirements. One was written before the 1.28 requirement came to effect. So the 2009 state law, it was written in 2009 and just came to effect January 1st, was for any, when there's a building permit, any toilet that's 1.6 or less needs to be retrofitted with a 1.6 or lower. And that, at the time it was written, that's what exists. But now the new law, another new law that started says that only 1.28 toilets can now be sold in California. So you're hard-pressed to find a 1.6 to replace that. So really, it's 1.28.
Well, let's go back to that cherished pink toilet we're talking about. Can that be retrofitted so we could keep it in place?
No. It is not functionally effective to retrofit a higher-flow toilet. They weren't designed to work at low flows.
I see, so it wouldn't work that well, yeah.
And so it doesn't work well, and it sometimes ends up having to be double-fleshed.
Right.
And so it wastes even more water. So no, we, the requirement is to replace it.
Thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to really appreciate the fine work that staff has done on this. And I would like to move, I would like to move that council approve and adopt City of Santa Barbara Water Supply Management Report for 2013, finding that groundwater resources are in long-term balance in accordance with the conjunctive management element of the city's long-term water supply plan.
There a second?
Second.
So we have appreciation and a motion all at once.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. White?
I have some comments I'd like to make.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I was going to make these at introduction, but I saw that we were going to have a, a water discussion today, so I saved my comments for now. And I, I'm very concerned about our water supply situation. And I think that staff has responded to kind of maybe a, a sense that is the back of the hair in the back of the neck sense that something's not right. And that certainly is the sense that I have. And I am the person that's experienced. And if you could just go back to that demand variations with weather slide. As one of the managers, one of the water commissioners...
Is that the one?
No. What, demand variations with weather. There you go. I rode that roller coaster, that razor blade down, that you see that black line that, in the 1990 area, as one of the people entrusted, that we, as we entrust our water commissioners to manage the supply. And I can tell you, for one, that high demand there, one of the reasons that it was so high is that there was, the cost, water was free. We had everything paid for and no sense of trying to invest in anything in the future or price for conservation. So water was cheap and everybody used every bit of it that they wanted to. And obviously, we have, even today, even just year in, year out, we have a block rate structure that, that just as with electricity and gas, you use more, you pay a higher rate. And that's not, was not the case then. And it's one of the things we learned. What we did in that era, and so we, the Long-Term Water Supply Plan was one of the pieces that was developed as a result of that crash. And I commend staff and I think that the city as a whole has done a good job in not only in updating that water supply plan, so we went from a five-year plan to a six-year plan. And that just went on record recently. And I also appreciate, what staff referred to today was, I heard the term adaptive management brought in because we need to be staying flexible. And that was, that was, a comment was made as we were talking about a variety of supplies and strategies for, for today's discussion. And there are many moving parts. And I know that Mr. Francisco is representing us at the regional agencies. We have even Kachuma, we have a number that we say is our allocation. That allocation is by no means sure. Even, even the water that's in the lake today, that, as I understand it, that could change. We could have, whereas we thought we had X number of acre feet, that could be 0.7 of that amount due to the, the biological assessment and the water rights decision at the State Water Board. So that, even those sort of base supplies that we have are not necessarily sure. And so, and obviously, as Mr. Hart said, snowpack is at crazy low levels. Los Angeles experienced the lowest rainfall in a calendar year in history. So we have some, some really alarming pieces of change that are occurring here, an accelerating change. So we're not just looking forward at this, at the system that, that like, we can't just go back to what happened in 1990 and say, oh, that's going to happen again and we can plan for it. We're looking at an excel, we could be looking at an accelerating system that we need to be planning for. So I, and I think that staff, one of the things that came forward today was, it was a presentation that was more aggressive than we heard even at Water Commission six weeks ago, whatever it was, because that's how fast things are changing. And I appreciate, I think that's, I'm hearing staff just trying to stay flexible to these changing conditions. And I want to call out, by the way, Russell Ruiz, who was here, he stayed for all the, the gang injunction testimony. Russell is one of our water buffaloes and he, it's, it's he that has talked about getting that water reclamation system up and running as soon as possible. And of course, as we've tried, we have so many deferred maintenance pieces, it was a great commitment, I think, that the city's made. And now we have the plans in place and the investment is ready to go to rebuild a system, frankly, that never has worked properly. But that's going to be, but it, it should have, would have been online for years and therefore hold, you know, we would have had that much conservation going, or that much sort of less potable demand in place. But we didn't. However, at least we have the machinery. It's kind of like one step ahead of the reclamation plant, where we know we have that kind of as a whole card, but we're moving ahead with that. And it's going to be a critical piece in the drought where we're going to have that, that much water. We've been asking about the Foothill Basin, and I noticed, you know, thank you for the slides on that. It's, it's a basin that we have, we've, I'm glad we've been using it and I think we need to keep using it. It's a, it's a multi, it's, it's not just used by us. We don't have complete control over it. And bear with me, Mr. Francisco, I won't be too long. But it's, that basin, I think, is one of our supplies that we need to use and that it's, unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of resting it. I wanted to just point out, too, that we've, are, we don't even, money is going to be an issue as we go forward. And even our water meter system is outdated and we don't even have the ability to collect all the, the money that we're, we're owed because our water meter system is, is out of date. And I hope that we can continue to, continue forward with, with getting our water meter system upgraded because we're going to be needing that money. I also hope that we, that we're not just waiting another year to hear about water again. This is more urgent than that. And so I ask that we get updated, if it's every couple of months, something like that, because I am extremely worried about our water supply situation. I think that we could be looking at purchasing more water. My, I'm troubled with the comments about purchasing water because now's the time to purchase it when people aren't quite rushing for it. When you go out two years and we continue to have a drought, people are not going to be willing to sell their water as much as they are today. So I, I recommend that the city be looking forward there and perhaps purchasing some more water much sooner than later. I think that's just prudent timing. Some comments, I think that we have a well at the high school, which we've talked about. I think we may have some, we have some uses for that. It has not been brought online. I think that's yet one more, it's not a big supply, but it's another small supply that I think we need to make good use of. It's in basin one, but I hope that we can perhaps look at that more closely. So anyway, I'm worried. I think that we need to be looking, obviously, staff's looking at it more closely. I ask that council, if it's come back to council, shall we say, in 60 days, to just see, because that's going to be, I guess, that's the March, that's March deal, but we want to be not letting this thing slide. I do not want to be behind the curve as we were on that, on that, with that black line down there. We have the same kind of black line happening right now and it concerns me deeply. Thank you.
It seems like the timeline, should it continue not to rain, is that you'd come to a stage one in March, which is consistent with what Mr. White was saying. I think that we were, as I remember, I think it was in 2005, we had put on the agenda on Thursday, the, the agenda item to declare a stage one. And between putting out the agenda on Thursday and the Tuesday meeting, Kachuma spilled. So one can only hope, but we, you know, that, that did happen. I, one, two...
One more, I'm sorry. One last comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
And that is the desal plant permitting. We need to look at that. We need to, it's just, because that's, that's a one-year, two-year process in its own right. And let's, let's not let that, you know, we say, okay, we want to do it. Oh, we've got to wait two years and grind through that. Let's, let's be teed up on the, on the desal plant permitting process to go with all the, the actual investing in the infrastructure. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I would echo that as well. And I know we do have a local coastal commissioner who has always offered advice and just knowledge, and we could certainly utilize that, just to have, if there's any major changes or just not unaware of, as Mr. Hart was saying before, the perspective about desal plants has changed over the years since this one was built. I do have two questions. One about siltation and Gibraltar, and you mentioned earlier the, that it would be expensive. And it was just sort of expensive in the sense of desal expensive, more expensive, less expensive, where, I mean, how expensive are we talking about?
I don't, I don't have an exact number to quote. It's just relative to stabilizing the yields with the pass-through mode, it would be relatively expensive. I don't have a, we'd have to evaluate the, do a feasibility study to get an actual cost.
Well, if, if we're looking at a supply plan where we're going to have to spend up to $20 million for a desal plant, assuming all the permitting goes the way we think and that's the real budget, I think we should also look at what the other, I mean, you know, for future capacity. So obviously, if it doesn't rain, it doesn't matter how big the basin is, but for the, you know, long-term capacity issues, that might be something we want to think about some more. And then, could you put on slide 19? It's the Six-Year Dry Weather Supply Plan. So the recycled water, and I know we're in year three, and any, is there any chance, for example, I mean, I guess what I would like to see is a timeline of why we can't start using recycled water until year five instead of year four? What, what is the, you know, what is the process that's creating year five as the way to restart recycled water? And so you don't have to answer that right now unless you have a very quick answer?
Yeah, I can, real quick, Madam Mayor, yeah, the desal, or the tertiary filter project actually bids open this month and will be coming to you in March for a ward, but it is a 14-month construction period. And so we anticipate construction, and we've been really looking at how to accelerate. We even looked if there was a way to, to get something temporary in there, but just cost-wise, it wasn't penciling out. But we, we are exploring, just to let you know, we are exploring the use of some wells that, it's called Valley Verde, it's over in Hidden Valley, that wasn't very good for drinking water, but we're exploring it, using it in the reclaim system to try and offset some of the potable water needed. But we're going to be pushing that project quickly, hopefully to get our recycled in, in place for summer of 2015.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know. Well, in the meantime, hope for rain and, but I know we have our plan in place, which is really quite important. And like you said, you didn't just wake up the other day saying, what are we going to do? So that's good to know. And we all know that. We've been hearing that for a while. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Thank you very much. Item number 18.
Appointment of Mayor Pro Tempore, Ordinance Committee, and Finance Committee.
Okay, so the, we'll do one at a time here. The traditional process for Mayor Pro Tempore, obviously, these are three different positions here, is we usually go by seniority unless someone's already had that position. And my calculations show that it's Ms. Mario's time to become Mayor Pro Tem. And I've talked with her and she's willing to take it on. So if there's a nomination...
I would move nominating Ms. Mario. Second?
Okay. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then, first question is, we have a vacancy in the ordinance committee piece, and I first want to ask if anyone on the current finance committee or the ordinance, current ordinance, current members, well, let me start this way. Is anyone currently on the finance committee wanting to switch over to the ordinance committee?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Me.
Okay. So, so we'll, so that would solve that slot, which means, Mr. Hart, you are going to be on the finance committee. And then in terms of the chair, that position also was vacated by Mr. House. And Mr. Rouse actually spoke to me in expressing interest, if that is amenable to the council, if there's a motion for that.
I make the motion.
Second.
Okay, so moved in seconded for Mr. Rouse to be Chair of the ordinance committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, Mr. Francisco, you are currently the Chair of the Finance Committee, and do you want to continue being Chair?
Madam Mayor, I am happy to remain in that August position.
Okay. So is there a nomination to...
So moved.
Okay. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. The more complicated part will be next week when we'll go through all the council liaison posi- The more complicated part will be next week when we'll go through all the council liaison positions. So, thank you for that. And we're up to council member committee assignment reports. Ms. Maria?
Just a quickie, that I went to the youth council meeting last night and it's very exciting. They're partnering with the Pacific Pride Foundation to put on an LGBTQ leadership summit and it's for gay people and allies. And it, there's an adult track and a youth track. So, that's very exciting. Thank you.
Ms.? This morning, there was a press conference from the Santa Barbara International Film Festival that has the full listings, not all the films, but, you know, the number of world premieres, the number of U.S. premieres. They did talk about the opening night film, which will be a documentary by the producer who did The Cove, and it's about ocean restoration and Mike, it's going to be honoring Mike DeGruy in some way and James Cameron's in it, so there's some local flavor to that as well. So, that's coming up on January 30th, so before we know it. Okay. And with that, we are adjourned until next week. Thank you very much.